That I was requesting Apple gift cards and to get them for me. That's not me, but if you want to give me the cards, I take them. Just wanted you to know it is a fishing expedition. Okay, Ed, so don't buy any Apple ID, I mean, Apple gift cards. I think that's what you wanted me to tell you.
We're going to do it live.
Okay, thanks, bye.
Five minutes will be, the signal's live.
Claudia?
Yes?
Were you trying to reach me at seven?
Yeah, okay, we'll talk. Good evening and welcome to the City of Thousand Oaks Council Meeting for Tuesday, March 9th. Would you please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please do the roll call?
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Here.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Present, thank you. We don't have any requests for a continuance of any public hearing or agenda items, so we will go straight to special presentations. And we will begin, as always, with our city manager Drew Powers and the latest update on COVID-19. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you so much, Mayor Bill De La Peña. Just a brief update this evening. There were 135 new cases reported today, just about 2,300 new tests performed and six additional deaths, taking the death count to just over 900. On the vaccination front, things continue to improve in terms of quantity and administration. There were, we have, receiving about 30,000 a day, or a week, in terms of shots, and those are being administered. We're now approaching just about a quarter million administrations, 233,000 so far, of first dose administrations of the vaccination. There are people that are able to get vaccinated, those groups continue to shift and change with new state guidance. So the best place for folks to go for the latest information is VenturaCountyRecoveries.org. That's your location for getting a vaccination appointment. It's also to find out about eligibility. Beginning on March 15th, the next big shift on eligibility would be those with pre-existing conditions. And there is a requirement of getting a physician's administration letter for that. And so there's a process that you'll have to go through, but you can go through the list of pre-existing conditions that would qualify you. And those are for those aged 16 to 65. You can go to VenturaCountyRecoveries.org. One thing I did want to mention is that the county announced today the launch of their second $20 million business assistance program with federal funds that have come in. So the preregistration period will be March 24th through the 30th, and they will be accepting applications from March 31st through April 6th. And those are, it's $20 million countywide in business assistance grants, there are $5,000 grants, and they go to businesses and nonprofits with first eligibility being those that did not receive funds in the first round of granting. That concludes my update for this evening, Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Tonight, we also want, yes, Mr. Jones?
Yes, if this would be appropriate, I'd like to ask a quick question to the city manager. That bill, Mr. Manager, that is going through the Senate and the House right now, is it going to have some favorable effects here in Ventura County? If you understand the wording of the bill as, or approximately what it will do and it is, I presume, passed tomorrow?
Yes, sir, so great question. The bill, as it's tracking, and we have been involved with our lobbyists and others throughout the contemplation of this and prior iterations for local assistance funding directly to cities. And so the bill does include that. The exact amounts and the exact method for which that will be distributed and the types of expenditures that will be eligible for remain a bit of an open question until we read all of the language. But to give you a flavor of where it's tracking right now, for the City of Thousand Oaks, it's tracking in the neighborhood of $13 million.
And as far as the channeling of that money, that's still to be decided. You're going to evaluate where it is the most needed and, you know, and what it would do, where it would do the most good for Thousand Oaks. I presume Ventura County is going to, I've got funding too, is that correct?
So the counties have received funding throughout the, in the previous iterations of support bills. This will be the first bill that directs money straight to cities. And there's a variety of ways in which that, that will happen depending on the size of the city. So for us, the first order of business will be to understand what strings are attached. With funding like this, it's often only eligible for certain reimbursables or certain types of things. So we'll have to go through those details, which will be in the bill language after it's passed. But we would start with the Finance Audit Committee with an update, because they've been the ones dealing with our COVID set aside funds. And then we would end up coming with anything that we did to the entirety of the city council for a conversation about how to utilize those funds.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me ask that question.
Absolutely, all right. I assume that there are no other questions. I will move on to our next item on the agenda, and that is to remind everyone that we are commemorating and celebrating the contributions of women to our national and local economy, culture, and history. American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have played and continue to play critical roles in every aspect of American life. They compromise approximately half of the US workforce and the majority of the national volunteer labor force. They have served as leaders in every major progressive social change movement, not only working to secure their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also propelling the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and the peace movement, all of which have strived to create a more fair and just society for all. Despite these contributions, the role of American women still is often overlooked and undervalued in our workforce, our society, and our history. So on behalf of the entire city council, I would therefore like to encourage all residents to recognize the powerful contributions that we, women, have provided to this nation and our own community. And I hereby proclaim the month of March as Women's History Month. And to help us mark this occasion and to provide further comments on Women's History Month, I would like to invite and welcome Peggy Buckles. She is the co-president of the Thousand Oaks branch of the AAUW, and that is the American Association of University Women. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor De La Peña. On behalf of the Thousand Oaks branch of the American Association of University Women, I want to thank the Mayor Claudia Bill De La Peña and the city council for presenting us with this proclamation for Women in History Month. I would also like to give a shout out to our Women in History Committee consisting of Mary Ann Escaron, Jeanette Hosek, Bev Tashne Visen, Donna Langley, and Lori Peters. These women meet every August to decide which women to research and write biographies about. They contact our elementary and middle schools with six or so biographies of important women in history that the students can learn about and do a presentation on. Lori Peters and her students at One Spark Academy do a yearly presentation on these courageous women. This year's Zoom presentation will take place this Saturday, March 13th, at 3:00 PM, and will include Ida B. Wells, an anti-lynching crusader and journalist, Shirley Chisom, politician and educator, Dolores Huerta, politician activist and union organizer, Wilma Mankiller, chief of the Cherokee Nation, and Maya Angelou, writer and lecturer. Thank you again for the proclamation.
Thank you very much, and all the best with the presentation this weekend. And with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk?
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by council unless listed on the agenda, but may refer to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Tonight, we have a Spanish translator in attendance to assist speakers who have requested translation services. There may be moments of silence and brief delays during this time. Three individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes and six minutes for speakers requesting translation services.
Thank you very much. We have three public speakers at this moment. We have our first one, and they're all joining us via video, Anthony Tesoni, followed by Maria Rodriguez and Lady Valdez. So we're starting with Mr. Tesoni or Teson. Good evening.
Tesoni.
Tesoni, okay.
Buenas noches.
He's not on, Madam Mayor, so if we can move to the next person.
Okay, then we will move on to the next person, and that is Maria Rodriguez. Good evening.
Rodriguez, buenas noches. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councilmember, my name is Maria Rodriguez. And I am here from Buen Vecino of Conejo Valley, in Thousand Oaks. I would like to thank the city for including people like me in these discussions. I congratulate you, and I admire the efforts of the commission of the planning commission so that the plans can be inclusive for all of us who live here. I would like to remind all of you involved in the general plan that many of those members of those communities that have been neglected come from mixed status. Many of those families could have undocumented persons. But they are our neighbors and they're a vital part of our communities. They pay taxes, they send their children to our schools, and they provide They pay taxes, they send their children to our schools, and they provide and they do very important essential work. They put their own health at risk and their own family's health at risk. And that fear for their health is only one of the fears that is part of their daily lives. They're also in fear of arrest, deportation. And all of this affects the welfare of all of these families. Teenagers are also suffering this trauma. More than the stressful life and the pressures that all adolescents live through, Latin adolescents are suffering discrimination and fear. Because they have a marginal position in the United States as either migrants or children of migrants. And during the last few years, their situation has been more precarious because of the application of those immigration laws in some of the states. These children represent 25% of all high school children. They're the fastest growing group of workers forming part of the labor force in the United States. After all, their well-being and their success is also the success and the well-being of this country. With the inclusion of everyone in the Conejo Valley, you must be conscientious about providing housing that is truly affordable, that is safe and clean, having access to parks, markets, safe street play areas that will contribute to the well-being of all of our neighbors.
Lourdes?
Yes?
Can you please tell?
Thank you for your time.
Wonderful, okay. Thank you.
Muy bien, señora. Gracias.
Thank you very much for the translation. The next speaker, I'm not sure if we have Anthony back. Do we have him back? No, then we will go to Lady Valdez. Good evening.
Hola, buenas noches, Alcalde Bill de la Peña and members of the Consejo de la Ciudad de Thousand Oaks. Mi nombre es Lady Valdez.
Mayor Bill de la Peña, could you ask Lady Valdez to call on the Spanish line? Señora Valdez? Si me oye, podría llamar la otra línea en español, por favor?
Y buenas tardes.
La otra línea, por favor?
Sí, buenas tardes, Alcalde Bill de la Peña y consejos, and members of the Consejo de la Ciudad. Mi nombre es Lady Valdez, yo vivo en la ciudad de Canoga Park, pero trabajo en la ciudad de Thousand Oaks como coordinadora de oficina en un edificio cerca del Jans Marketplace.
Señora Lady Valdez?
Sí?
Soy su intérprete, sería tan amable de llamar por la línea que es la línea para intérpretes, en vez de, en vez de la línea de Zoom. Okay, she's already in my line, so if you could please keep Lady Valdez mute, I will be happy to interpret for her, Madam Mayor. Ahora sí, señora Lady Valdez. I think we muted her, TOTV? Go ahead.
Hable. So, good evening, Mrs. Mayor de la Peña and members of the city council of Thousand Oaks. My name is Lady Valdez. I live in Canoga Park, but I work in Thousand Oaks. I am an office coordinator in, at an office building near Jans Marketplace. And I'm here to give you my opinion of how important it is to have affordable housing. For people like me, we come from Oxnard and from Thousand Oaks and from other places to work in this area. We come every morning, we work, and then we don't leave till the evening. I would love to live in Thousand Oaks, but the housing cost is so high for my budget and for many other people's budgets. If I were to live in this city, I would spend much more time with my children, and I wouldn't spend so much time driving. I would do my shopping here, and all of my salary would go into the local economy. And if housing were more accessible in Thousand Oaks, my children could go to schools in the Conejo Valley. I would not be contaminating the environment because I would be driving less. And it would be more likely that I would plant deeper roots, and I could consider this place my place of living, not just the place where I work. It would be good for my health and the health of my family if I would live closer to my work. Our quality of life would be so much better. And it would be good for Thousand Oaks, too. Affordable housing would give us hope and a better future. Those of us that earn a modest salary in Thousand Oaks, we would have a stronger community and a richer place for everyone. And in closing, I want to thank organizations like Buen Vecino because they're working to help us. Please think of me and remember me that travel from city to city when you consider what's going to happen to this city's future. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and councilmember. Thank you for allowing our voices to be heard.
Thank you very much. This concludes.
And everyone have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Usted también, señora.
Thank you very much. And this concludes public comments. We will now go to our consent calendar. Are there any items which my colleagues would like to?
Madam Mayor, we do not have a consent calendar today.
Oh, we don't? That's right. I just saw that. Big yellow highlighter, it says none. Okay. Then we will move straight on to our department report. And this department report is in reference to the solid waste franchise agreement. And this will be headed off by our sustainability manager, Helen Cox.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Let me just bring up my presentation here. I'm here this evening regarding staff's recommendations for the award of the city's franchise agreement for solid waste collection services. And I'm joined by Cliff Finley, Public Works Director, and our consultant, Richard Tagore Irwin, President and CEO of R3 Consulting Group. This solid waste agreement is a key component of our sustainability strategic plan, governing how garbage, recyclables, and organic waste are collected and processed. Our current agreement expires at the end of this calendar year. This has provided us an opportunity to rethink solid waste services in the city and to develop a state-of-the-art agreement that incorporates new technology, clean vehicles, a significant outreach and education program, and ensures compliance with new state mandates that go into effect in 2022. As a reminder of the importance of the item, the 15-year contract value is close to $400 million. Long-term franchise agreements were first entered into in 1998 in various forms with Waste Management and E.J. Harrison. Waste Management currently serves residential and commercial customers in Thousand Oaks. Harrison serves the Newbury Park area of the city with residential service, as shown on this map. The current agreement was entered into in 2013, expiring at the end of June 2021, with a notice date for non-extension at the end of June 2018. However, on June 5th, 2018, council approved an extension of that notice date for contract termination by one year to allow time for staff to meet with Waste Management and Harrison and negotiate the terms of a new agreement. Those negotiations began in summer 2018. After almost a year of negotiation with Waste Management and Harrison on a revised agreement, terms had not been reached. City council added yet another six months for negotiation by approving a second extension of the notice date, this time moving it from June 30th, 2019, to December 31st, 2019. The haulers were instructed to provide a best and final offer for presentation to council in December 2019. On December 10th, the terms of the new agreement were presented to council in a memorandum of understanding. Council delayed their decision for a month, and on January 28th, last year, 2020, they voted to reject the terms of the MOU and instructed staff to issue a request for proposals. At this point, Waste Management and Harrison had been given over 18 months to develop and present their best offer to the city. Just a quick word on why the new agreement is different from those in the past. The state has passed a new law called SB 1383, which requires that organic waste, defined as food waste, green or yard waste, non-hazardous wood waste, and food soil paper waste that is mixed with food waste, becomes diverted from the landfill in order to reduce emissions from methane, the potent greenhouse gas. SB 1383 comes with a host of new requirements, some of which are listed here. These surround the collection and processing of organic waste and include education and outreach, compliance and enforcement, and reporting. Although the city will ultimately be responsible for complying with the mandate, the new agreement has been structured to place the implementation burden for many of these elements on the hauler in order to assist the city with compliance. Staff, in consultation with R3 Consulting Group, developed a request for proposals, or RFP as it's known, which was released last summer. The new agreement was included in the RFP and was substantially the same as that had been presented to Waste Management and Harrison in the MOU negotiations. It was developed to comply with these man, with the new state mandate, beginning on January 1st, 2022, with a 15-year term chosen to minimize rates by allowing costs to be spread out over the lifetime of the hauler's investment in containers and vehicles. It includes a bundled residential cart service, much as now, but adding food waste to the green waste bin, and a bundled commercial bin service whereby garbage, recycling, and organics containers are provided as a package. All proposers were asked to propose to the same terms and the same contract. The RFP process provided an additional opportunity for Waste Management and Harrison to submit revised rates, understanding that there could be additional haulers competing for the contract. The city's standard RFP process for professional services agreement was followed. This includes the steps shown here. These steps were provided in the RFP document that the proposers received and also at the mandatory pre-proposal meeting. The solicitation of a single hauler to provide both residential and commercial services was explained, as well as the agreement terms. Other items covered included the multi-step evaluation process, scoring, and interview, which were to be conducted by a review committee, followed by recommendations to council for award to the top-scoring proposer. The city retains the confidentiality of each proposal and does not negotiate costs or rates with proposers, only services. This is the city's standard practice. At the pre-proposal meeting, participants had an opportunity to ask questions or seek clarification. No questions were asked. In collaboration with the city, our consultant, R3 Consulting Group, developed the evaluation and scoring methodology based on their more than 25 years of experience in conducting solid waste RFPs in California. Shown here are the general categories in which proposals were evaluated and scored. This information was provided in the RFP with the details of the items included in each category. This information was also provided at the pre-proposal meeting. A review committee was formed comprising staff from Public Works and Finance, plus members of the consultants team. The evaluation process included an initial pass/fail review, followed by detailed evaluation and scoring by the review committee based on the criteria shown in the previous slide. Note that this was a careful and time-consuming process, as proposals were several hundred pages in length and included details on everything from vehicle and collection container specifications to transition plans, year-by-year diversion targets, sustainability and compliance plans, and operational plans. The schedule for the RFP process is shown here and was included in the RFP document and presented at the pre-proposal meeting. The schedule was adhered to. Four proposals were received, evaluated, and scored. Three of the companies were selected as finalists. Based on evaluation scores, American Reclamation was not selected as a finalist. The three finalists, Athens Services, E.J. Harrison, and Waste Management, were interviewed, answered questions, and provided presentations to the review committee. The outcome of the evaluation process is The outcome of the evaluation process is shown here. Athens Services scored the highest in the qualitative criteria, as described earlier, by a significant margin of more than eight percentage points. This score did not include the consideration of the rates which were evaluated separately, but did include all the other required submittals, including operations plans, transition plan, customer service plan, sustainability and compliance plan, and the use of technology. Athens also came out top with respect to rates, offering the lowest rates by a large margin, as I will show next. These are the finalists' proposed monthly rates for a three-cart bundled service once a week for residents. The top row shows the service that's utilized by more than 95% of residential customers currently. We can see that Athens is offering the lowest rate by more than 25% compared to Waste Management and EJ Harrison's proposals. Comparing this to current rates, Athens is offering residents an almost 34% reduction. The new service will essentially be the same as residents have now, but with the addition of food waste to their green waste bin and some additional services that I'll get to in a few minutes. As noted, Athens' proposal offers a substantial reduction in residential rates, which amounts to annual savings to residents of about $150 a year and the total savings to our residents over the city of almost $5 million a year. Over the lifetime of the contract, this will save residents over $70 million. Also, under the new contract, rate increases are limited to the increase in the annual consumer price index and capped at 4%. What this means is if the CPI were to continue to increase at the same rate as it has over the past 20 years at 2.5%, then rates at the end of the contract period will still be less than they are now. Here we're showing some comparative residential rates across the region. There are two important things to note from this chart. First, there's a large variation in rates in different cities. And second, Los Angeles County tends to have lower service rates than Ventura County. The variation in rates across cities is due to a number of factors, including availability, urban distance to facilities, the type of service provided, the effective date of the rates in the contract, franchise and other fees, and other features of the contract, such as the number of waste containers, street sweeping, bulky item pickup, free landfill days, et cetera, and other services. The lower rates in Los Angeles County may be partly due to increased competition in that area. Superposed on this chart now is the proposed Athens rate for service here. This is clearly a competitive rate, but not out of the ordinary by any means. Athens' rates in other cities are now shown in the striped bars. Clearly, Athens is offering service in Thousand Oaks at a rate that is commensurate with their rates elsewhere. In fact, their rate for Thousand Oaks is a little higher than theirs in Santa Paula, which is their only service in Ventura County, and is comparable to theirs in a city like Whittier, where the service is a similar three-cart bundled service. Cities with some of the lower rates here, like Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, and Norwalk that are also served by Athens, have similar services to Thousand Oaks as well with a three-cart service, but their higher housing density lowers their collection costs, so their rates are a little lower. On the other end of the spectrum, Temple City has Athens' highest rate, but in that city, trash service is twice a week, explaining why rates there are much higher. Moving on now to commercial rates. Commercial rates are more complex and residential as customers have a choice of various container sizes and frequency of pickup from once to six times a week. The data here shows the number of customer accounts receiving each level of trash service. This data was also provided to proposers in the RFP package. Note that the numbers here are not the same as the number of bins or pickups as some customers may have multiple trash enclosures and multiple bins. In order to provide illustrative rates here, I will present just those for the most common services as highlighted here in green. The comparison of all of the rates is available as an attachment to the staff report. Note that the new service is different from the current one. It's a bundled service which includes trash and recycling plus organics and was specified in order to ensure compliance with new state regulations which come into force next year. All proposers were asked to provide rates for the same bundled service. Here we show a comparison of the rates submitted by each of the proposers for the most popular services, as shown in green on the previous slide. In a comparison of the proposed rates for the common once-a-week service in one of these three bin sizes, you can see that the Athens rate is clearly well below those proposed by the other haulers. For the popular three-bin service, three-yard bin service, collected at various frequencies, Athens's rates are again very much lower than the competition. In nearly all cases, Harrison and Waste Management rates proposed are at least 50% more. As a frame of reference, I'm now showing the rates that the customers would be paying now if they had an equal volume of trash plus recycling service, but without any organics. These rates are not directly comparable because the new service is going to be different from the existing one and will include organics. In addition, many customers will be resizing all of their containers in order to maintain their same total volume of service, but will reconfigure their waste into three streams. I just showed the rates also for the three-yard service. Although some customers may see an increase in rates, these increases will be very much lower than they would experience with the proposals from Waste Management and Harrison. To highlight some of the provisions of the new agreement, as I mentioned, this is a 15-year contract, compliant with the state's SB 1383 mandate, and providing a three-container service, both to residents and businesses. The cost of the RFP process will be reimbursed by the successful proposer. There'll be a new household hazardous waste service, which will be conducted door-to-door, collecting paints, oils, cleaning fluids, et cetera, from homes up to four times a year. This has been added to save residents the trip they'd otherwise have to make to dispose of those items at the city's household hazardous waste facility in Newbury Park. Some other provisions include increasing the number of free landfill days from two to three. The bulky item pickup, the large item pickup, will continue twice a year, but we have added multifamily dwellings to this plan so that they can also receive free large item pickup from their condominiums and apartments. There will be a fleet of new vehicles powered by renewable natural gas, and all collection containers will be new. Collection containers will now be in standard colors, charcoal for the trash, blue for recycling, and green for organics. One important provision of the new agreement is that any current workers who are displaced by the transition will be offered employment by the new hauler at or above their current wage. Athens has developed a very attractive and thorough transition plan, which includes 45 recycling coordinators who will meet with businesses in the six months prior to service starting and will assist them with rightsizing their service to minimize their cost. They'll also train businesses on what goes in what bin and will be available to answer questions on the new mandate. Athens also detailed a plan for collecting existing containers and replacing them with new ones on the spot without the need to have excess bins and carts littering streets and parking lots. Old ones will be removed and stored for collection by the current haulers. Athens has located a walking customer service in Thousand Oaks, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which will serve as their hub for local service. They've also offered a $200,000 a year for community support with funds which will be directed by city council. An added feature that parents and young children alike will enjoy is an online dashboard that will allow them to locate their trash truck in real time so that they never miss a pickup. Athens is a leader in technology and has already integrated cameras, computers, and GIS mapping into their trucks. This allows them to be responsive to real-time requests from their dispatcher, to monitor loads, and perform compliance responsibilities such as tracking recycling and organics contamination as required by the state. A city dashboard connected to this technology will allow city staff to monitor service, generate reports as needed, and respond to resident and business inquiries and concerns. Also, a vehicle telematics dashboard that Athens will share with the city allows for monitoring of each truck's speed, location, and progress throughout the day to optimize routes and to address any resident concerns or questions. Athens has chosen the facilities shown here for the disposal of the three streams of solid waste collected. Currently, the city's garbage is disposed of at Simi Valley Landfill, recycling at Harrison Gold Coast Facility in Ventura, and at Waste Management's Azusa Facility, and green waste, which is processed by Agroman and disposed of at various sites. Commercial food waste is currently being collected and mixed with green waste and trucked to South Kern Compost Facility in Taft, where it is composted. Under the new agreement, there'll be flexibility in the facilities to be utilized. Depending on rates made available for disposal at Simi Valley Landfill, garbage may be directed there. In addition, as organics processing capacity opens up in the county through the construction of new facilities, there is potential for the city's green and food waste to be processed locally. It is important to note that there are no permitted food waste processing facilities in the county currently. So all food waste already leaves the county, and most of it is processed in Kern County. Future decisions on the facilities to be utilized, once there are facilities constructed here, those decisions will be based on the arrangements and the rates that can be negotiated between Athens and the owners of those facilities. Shown here are the mileage comparisons for distances to processing facilities from Thousand Oaks City Hall and comparing those used in the current agreement to the ones proposed by Athens. Clearly, for trash, there's little difference. For recycling, the distance to Athens' Sun Valley Facility is the average, actually, of the distances that are currently traveled to Harrison's Gold Coast Facility in Oxnard and Waste Management's facility in Azusa that has historically been utilized for processing residential recyclables that Waste Management collects. As mentioned, organics are processed by Agroman at the Simi Valley Landfill and then trucked to an Agroman facility in the county or to Cinegro's Compost Facility in Taft. The distance to Victorville is similar to that. As mentioned, if and when a permitted facility that can handle food waste becomes available within the county, that will become an option. One important sustainability feature of the new contract is that Athens will purchase renewable natural gas, known as RNG, as the fuel for their vehicles. This is the most sustainable fuel available for heavy vehicles and comes from cleaning up biogas produced from the decomposition of organic matter, mainly from dairy and livestock waste, from wastewater, and from organic waste in landfills. This biogas is captured, cleaned, and converted into RNG. The RNG is injected into existing natural gas grid pipelines and dispensed to fleets at CNG stations. It can be used interchangeably with conventional natural gas, so fleets don't need to make any operational changes if they currently use CNG. They can purchase and fuel with RNG. RNG is actually classified as a fuel with negative GHG emissions because it takes methane out of the atmosphere and converts it to a less potent GHG or carbon dioxide. So this will be the fuel that will be utilized by all of the Athens vehicles. Athens Services is a family-owned and operated company, running its operations out of their office in the city of industry. When Los Angeles recently divided up the city into 11 distinct separately franchised zones, Athens was awarded three zones, the largest part. Athens serves residents in Hermosa Beach, Redondo Beach, La Cañada, Glendora, Monrovia, San Marino, Norwalk, South Pasadena, West Hollywood, Whittier, and here in Ventura County, Santa Paula. Thank you. These are the staff recommendations. I'm going to hand over to Cliff Finley now, the Public Works Director, for some final comments.
Thank you, Helen. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. First, I'd like to thank all of the proposers for the time and effort required in responding to the solid waste RFP. I know it was a significant effort. I would also like to thank Dr. Cox and her team for the effort they put into preparing and evaluating these proposals and preparing for this presentation tonight. They have been working on this RFP for solid waste services for the city of Thousand Oaks for well over a year. As Dr. Cox mentioned in her presentation, council made the decision to go out for an RFP for solid waste services in January 2020. The final RFP and proposed contract were finalized in the spring, and the RFP was issued in July of last year. The RFP was prepared with the help of R3 Consulting and was over 200 pages long and included a copy of the franchise agreement that is very close to the one before you tonight. All of the requirements of the RFP submitted were clearly identified, as well as the actual franchise agreement, which included all of the requirements in SB 1383. As Helen mentioned, the city held a pre-proposal meeting on July 30th to answer questions regarding the RFP process and content. The requirements of the RFP, as well as the selection process, was clearly laid out. Four proposals were received, honored before October 15th, and the review process began just as it was outlined within the RFP. Following the review of the proposals, three of the four proposers were invited for interviews to get clarification on issues and questions identified by the review panel. Following the interview, the panel ranked the final three proposers based on the criteria listed in the RFP. Then they compared the rates, and as it turned out, the top-rated proposer, Athens, also had the lowest rates. The city staff and the consultants thoroughly checked references in the cities where Athens provides services, visited their facilities, and met with Athens to confirm the details of their proposal. The process followed for the solid waste services RFP is consistent with the city's normal RFP process. The process is identifying the RFP is transparent and fair to all proposers and does not allow for the sharing of information included within the proposals until after the recommendation for selection is ready for council. Based on this process, which staff followed to a T, we stand behind our recommendation this evening. Thank you for your time this evening, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Cox, and thank you, Mr. Finley. Appreciate this very much. I will now go to my colleagues for any questions, and I'm sure there will be plenty. You can raise your hand, or either electronically, or Mr. Mayor Pretem Bob Engler, and then Councilmember Al Adam, and then Councilmember McNamee. Mayor Pretem Engler?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, I don't, we don't hear, we don't hear Bob Engler.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. I can hear you. Am I not, can nobody hear me? Is my microphone not working?
I can hear you too.
You can?
Looks like everybody's got their hand up.
Yes, I mentioned that we were going to start with Mayor Protem Engler, followed by Councilmember Al Adam, and then Mr. McNamie.
Claudia, are you there?
Ah, okay, that's why.
We just need to pause for a quick minute here. I'm checking in to see what's going on.
All right.
Okay, I did turn my microphone on because you can hear me here in the chamber. Yep.
Mayor Protem Engler, it might be a good idea to take just a five-minute break here until we can sort it out, if you want to call for that.
Yeah, that, that sounds very good, Mr. Powers. Why don't we take a five-minute recess, do our, get our technical issues taken care of?
I believe we are back. Can everybody hear me now?
We can.
Yes? Excellent.
I hear you.
Excellent. Much, much better. Thank you for your patience. We seem to have fixed a problem temporarily. I, as I was saying just a few minutes ago, we were going to start out our questions with Mayor Protem Bob Engler, followed by Councilmember Al Adam, Mr. McNamie, and had not heard from Mr. Jones. So, Bob, Mr. Engler, if you are ready, we are ready for you. Go ahead.
I am ready. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, some, some questions for staff, and of course, I have some questions for the applicant as well. The first question I have for the staff, and you somewhat covered it, the there's been some suggestion that we haven't followed our, our normal system of RFPs and gone through our normal regimen. Could you please go over that one more time for me? How we, how we apply it our own standards to this operation?
Yes, so we publish a notice that the RFP is going to be released. That's published in the local paper in the Aecon. And then the RFP is published on the, on a website that those applicants have access to. There's a mandatory pre-proposal meeting, the date of which is published in that RFP. And all the proposers attended that meeting. At that meeting, we go over the conditions and the terms that of both the agreement, the solid waste agreement, but also of the RFP process. So we stepped through how the RFP process will be conducted. We reviewed the scoring and evaluation criteria, the use of a review committee to score and evaluate the proposals. There were three phases of evaluation that we explained. They were the pass fail, there was the scoring, and then there was an opportunity for finalists to present and be present for interviews and questions. We then select a finalist, the top, our top-scoring proposer at that time, and that's who the city will negotiate with. And then the negotiations at that point were really very minor. Decisions about which, which services or very, very minor changes to the actual contract language from that that was published in the RFP. So those negotiations were actually very short and straightforward. And we did not disclose any of the proposals between the different applicants. So nobody saw anybody else's proposals or rates. That's the standard city practice, is that all of that information is kept confidential until the recommendation is made to council. And at that point, that information is released.
Yeah, it seemed to be, just from my perspective, it seemed to be the, the standard operation that we have done in the past on different things. The recommendation is similar to other recommendations you've made in terms of even, even street maintenance and that sort of thing. Is that, was that system followed the same way in those types of contracts as it was in this contract?
Yes, I can let Mr. Finley speak to that?
Yes, yes, thank you, I will. It's a little bit different. This is for professional services. So it's truly for a request for proposals. It's qualification-based and, and price, but you consider the qualifications as well. A bid for a street maintenance project might be a straight bid, and we at that point always are required to take the low bidder.
And, and what due diligence did, did staff do as far as checking references? Did you call references? Did you look online for any type of, any type of complaints with the Better Business Bureau and that sort of thing? How did you verify that this is a reliable company?
We called references in several cities where Athens currently has service and talked to the city staff who run those programs about whether they had any issues with managing the contract or whether they had customer service complaints. We also did the same for Waste Management and Harrison. So that's a standard part. We check, we check references. We also did site visits to the sites that we had not previously visited. We have visited most of Waste Management and Harrison sites within the last 18 months or so. So we didn't revisit sites that we've been to recently. We did visit Waste Management's new facility in Sun Valley that they were offering for the recycling. And then we visited Athens facilities that we hadn't previously been to. So we did that. We also asked for any litigation history from the applicants. So we asked for a five-year history of any litigation, and we do investigate anything that is identified there.
There, there's intimation, intimated, it's been intimated that the, this particular company tends to come in with a low bid and then use further bids along the way that would raise the rates unnecessarily. Did you look into that aspect of it as well? What's their history with some of their other customers? And do our current, have our current customer or our current vendors raised rates along the way with cause?
So the assurance that we have is that the contract does not allow that. The contract clearly specifies that the rates are going to be increased only with the CPI, unless there is a change in law and there is allowance made for that. Our current providers have asked for two extraordinary rate increases in the last five years that have increased rates substantially beyond the CPI. So those, and, and as far as other cities, we, every city is unique, and the circumstances of when rate changes take place, there are multiple circumstances surrounding that, including, for example, whether there's been major contract changes, major service changes, et cetera. So in all cases, the city councils will have to approve those. We did not dig into each one of those, though I believe our consultant could provide details if you had specific questions about specific cities. But under the current contract, we do have a guarantee because that's written in the contract.
And this, this is really, I guess, more of a question for the consultant, and perhaps you can chime in as well, Dr. Cox. R3 was a consultant on this and has been a consultant on other cities' efforts to find a, a solid waste vendor. Does R3, I, I don't, I don't mean to cast aspersions, but do they normally recommend Athens? Or is there, is it, how do they come about recommending Athens to us? Is it, is it something they normally do? Do they have a working relationship or some other relationship with Athens that would prejudice their thoughts toward them?
Helen, I'll go ahead and answer that if I can. This is Richard Tegor Urban. I'm a principal of R3 Consulting. I've been doing this type of work for over 30 years. Myself and our company has never worked for any private solid waste service provider, landfill collection company. We just don't do that. We only work for public agencies. And I went back through kind of our list over the last 20 years. I've worked on about 120 different public procurement slash negotiation projects in California over the last 20 years. Out of that 120, four involved Athens. This is four, only four. This is the first contract that, that I've worked on the last 20 years that Athens has actually won. The same out of that 120, 28 have been with Waste Management. So I, I think I can very, very objectively say we have no bias whatsoever. And within the industry, we're generally known as having no biases. We will treat every proponent very fairly and very evenly throughout the process.
Thank you. I recognize that's sort of a rude, rude question to ask, but I wanted to make sure that that got out in the open. That, that's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We will now go to Councilmember Adam.
Let me get off to you. Thank you, Mayor. So just so everyone understands in the public, this is our first request for proposal for a waste franchise agreement, really, in the history of the city, is it not, Dr. Cox?
That's correct, yes.
Yeah, so we've been with, with Harrison and Waste Management for a couple of decades now, if not more. And there was kind of, as you mentioned in your staff report, there was kind of a catalyst for that. I think both haulers had 18 months through a memorandum of understanding to come up with a rate structure that satisfied staff and the council. And if I remember the meeting where we were finally presented with that, it was higher in both commercial and residential. And that was kind of the catalyst at the time for the council to say, well, you know what? Let's go out and test the open market. Is that, is that the way you recall it, Dr. Cox?
Yes, that, that is the case. It was felt that the city had never done that. There are a lot of changes on the horizon. There had been changes with recycling costs. There were changes with the new state mandates. We didn't really know what those were going to cost, and so it was really an opportunity to, to test the waters.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, a, a good wording, opportunity. And it, and it may well have turned out to be an opportunity. So is, this is the biggest contract, other than maybe police and fire, that the city will enter into, is it not?
I believe that's true, yes.
Yes, so you know, being prudent, and I think it was a prudent thing to do. Naturally, we hired a consultant to help us with this contract, R3. And would you say that they brought value to the table in all the negotiations and the different criteria that they worked out for us?
Very much so. They brought in their expertise. I mean, having just heard from Richard about the number of years of expertise here, they've also worked extensively in Northern California, where things have tended to be a little bit ahead in the solid waste industry. So, and also the, the enormous amount of detail that goes into putting one of these RFP documents together. The amount of data that has to be collected, the amount of detail on vehicles, containers, finances, many, many things that, that the staff at the city doesn't have expertise in that particular realm. So they certainly brought a lot of value.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, oh, I, I completely agree. Well warranted to bring in a consultant with the kind of expertise that R3 has. And the, the happy ending to our relationship with R3, and I want people to understand this, is that Athens has proposed to reimburse us completely for the cost that R3 charges the city. Is that not correct?
That is correct. That was a condition actually of the, the agreement, so, yes.
Good, good. And just as an aside, I, I see in one of the community benefits, they've also proposed to give us $200,000 in a grant that I believe we could spend at our discretion, can we not?
That's correct. That was not a required part of the agreement. That was something that Athens offered, offered to the city because they would like to support the community.
Yeah, kind of sweeten the pod. And I think people should understand as well that there was a far greater criterion judging these haulers than just rates. And I noticed in the staff report that there were things like experience, reputation, financial qualifications, the technical approach, et cetera. And, and as you say, Athens came out number one in all those categories, huh?
They came out in five of six of the categories, yes.
Five of the six, okay. And then, of course, they, and so the, the lowered price was certainly considered, but not necessarily the end-all and be-all in making this recommendation, correct?
No, the recommendation was made easier by the fact that they were topping so many of the other categories and in the overall qualitative criteria as well as the rates. So that certainly made the review committee's job easier.
Okay. And just one final question. So this is a 15-year term. Tell me, why is, why would a 15-year term be advantageous to the ratepayer versus, say, a five-year term or 10? be advantageous to the ratepayer versus, say, a five-year term or a ten-year term?
There are lots of fixed costs that go into an operation like this, including the purchase of vehicles and containers, et cetera. I believe that the capital investment that Athens is looking at is over $25 million. So clearly, to spread those costs out over sort of the vehicle lifetime, container lifetime, et cetera, reduces the costs to the customer over, if you were to try to spread those out over a much shorter time.
I see. So to, to depreciate the cost over fifteen years is going to save ratepayers money, bottom line, right?
Right, I believe Athens told us that it would have been four to six dollars at least more per customer per month in the rates if they had had to make a contract of less than ten years.
Ah, okay.
A significant difference.
All right, very good. Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Certainly.
And we will now go to Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A few observations, and I'd like to say thank you for being here this evening to answer any questions. What I like about this agreement is that it's a tremendous savings to the Thousand Oaks residents when you're looking at $5 million annually, $70 million over the fifteen-year period. That keeps more money into our local economy as compared to it leaving out elsewhere. So that stimulates our local economy with the lowest rates. And that is the purpose of sending out for bid, find the lowest rate at the greatest service. And that's what I believe we've done here. I'm very delighted that you're going to make an offer to keep on the current drivers for the other waste haulers to bring them into your umbrella and thus maintain their jobs. Is there a signing bonus that I believe mentioned in discussions previously?
I, I will let the Athens folk maybe talk about that when they get their chance to speak. But my understanding is that there is a $10,000 bonus. I don't know if it's at signing or, or after a certain period of time.
Thank you. The other question I think would be for the waste hauler to answer directly, if, if you don't know, is that some other cities, as I've done research in this area pending this decision here, is that when organics and food wastes are separated out, some cities have experienced difficulty with keeping rats out of the food wastes there stored until they're picked up. At, at some point, if during their presentation, if you can comment about how we can secure the food and the organics so that way animals don't get into it, raccoons, opossum, rats, mice, so forth, so that we, we keep our cities safe in that regard. And the last is that, if you would please comment, how is it that you're able to provide the same service but at a substantially reduced price compared to the other two waste haulers that we have had for a number of years? I would love to hear your formula, your magic on how you're able to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I maybe I'll answer the, one of the questions about the, the vermin. We have food waste collection currently at many businesses in the city. And really, there, there's no change in what's going into the waste stream. So all that's happening is the food waste that formerly went into a garbage bin is now being put in a different bin. The, the key there is that the, the bin itself should be watertight, should be airtight, should be leak-proof. And so that there shouldn't be access for the rodents. I think that will be facilitated, particularly either by carts or using new bins. That will certainly help. But as I said, some, some of that is a little bit of urban myth perhaps because really that same food waste is currently just in a trash container instead of in a separate organics container. That's been our observation anyway. But anyway, I will certainly defer to Athens if they want to elaborate or have them answer your other question about rates.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jones, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, I have some questions, but I, I'd like to wait to hear from the various applicants before I ask them if that's acceptable.
Excellent, okay. I have a couple of questions before we go to our thirty-four public speakers. And yes, so the question I have, obviously, we've have, we have received with the council and staff a flood of emails and letters. And I'd wanted to just ask a few questions to reiterate or to confirm. There was an allegation about the Athens with in regards to litigation. And I heard Dr. Cox mention that litigation background and history was actually looked into. But perhaps we can get clarification as to some of the cities that are being pointed out in, in a couple of letters that we received from Waste Management as to, are we comparing apples to oranges?
Sorry, in terms of the litigation?
Yes.
So we did ask for five-year litigation history. Athens reported one case with the city of Montebello. And Tracy can provide details on that if you're interested. Waste Management listed three cases of litigation in the past five years and EJ Harrison listed none.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I can provide some insight as to the Montebello litigation based on just, we did some cursory review based on an email that was received today regarding the Montebello lawsuit. My understanding is that Athens has had a contract to provide trash services since 1984. In 2008, the city awarded a new contract to Athens rather than going out to an RFP. And there was opposition over doing this. And that's my understanding that although the contract was awarded to Athens, that the mayor refused to execute the contract and then it resulted in a voter initiative requiring an RFP for solid waste services. So it's my understanding that this lawsuit pertains to the method of the contract and was not about rates or services. But I'm sure that when representatives from Athens speak, they can probably clarify and fill in the holes.
Thank you. Yes, I do have several questions because obviously we, we do want to make sure that we're being fair to everyone in regard to the comments we receive from the public and from Waste Management. In regard to the trucks, let me see here. I'm trying to call this up. There was an email sent to us. And the email mentioned, and it's also in the supplemental packet, that Athens will use thirty-four auto car ACX sixty-four trash trucks in their mix of forty-six vehicles. And the manufacturer offers a choice of diesel and/or CNG LNG engines and it rules out electric trash trucks. I know Ms. Cox mentioned that, but the question is, what is meant by renewable natural gas? And I think Ms. Cox did address that. And where do they get renewable natural gas? Will Athens use CNG and not use a renewable fuel as stated in the report? Ms. Cox?
So they can fuel at their, they have a CNG station that they use to fuel. And they pay for that gas to be renewable natural gas, which I explained actually has a net negative GHG emissions rating. And that's a California rating. It's one of the lowest carbon fuels there that exist. So they, I'm not sure who their supplier is. I'm sure they can answer that. There's a couple of suppliers, Trillium and, and another company that they can purchase the RNG from. And that's what they're doing now, and that's what they will do for the vehicles that are used to, for the Thousand Oaks fleet. As far as electric vehicles, these are really just sort of coming into the picture for trash trucks. They're very heavy vehicles. They do a lot of miles around the city. And to find electric vehicles, it's in the very preliminary stage. I believe that it would probably not be economically feasible or financially, it would certainly increase rates by a lot, whereas really what they're using instead, which are very, very quiet, clean burning, natural gas vehicles with renewable natural gas are really equally, if not superior, for this purpose.
Okay, and then there was also a question about tipping fees for the Simi Valley landfill. And those fees would be leaving Ventura County because the landfill will now be taken to LA County. Ms. Cox?
The fees, the landfill fees?
Yes, maybe Mr. Mr. Finley can address that.
Yes, so Mayor Villalpina. Actually, the, the, that was not part of this RFP. We did not designate, at least when we submitted this RFP, we went out to the market to find out where was the, provided the best benefit and rates for our citizens. We, we did not consider tipping fee agreements with the county or anybody else for that matter. We let the market tell us what would be best for our residents. So that's something we'll, we'll have to discuss later and, and maybe talk to Athens and, and possibly Waste Management about in the future.
Okay, very good. And the other question, I think, more for the applicant. So, and with that, I will now go to our public speakers. And the first one, of course, will be Athens, the applicant, or the, not the applicant, but the candidate. Gary Clifford of Athens, followed by Caesar Torres, and then Elizabeth Ramirez. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de la Pena, Mayor Protan Engler, and Councilmember Adam Jones and McNamee. My name is Gary Clifford. I'm the Executive Vice President of Athens Services. And our team is here tonight to ask for your support of the staff's recommendation approving an exclusive waste franchise agreement with Athens Services. Your decision to check the marketplace and proceed with an RFP was the right choice at the right time. And you've been rewarded with an opportunity to affect change in Thousand Oaks. Athens will affect the change you have asked for with a reverence of the past, protecting what is worked well, and building upon that to create a bright future for your community as it relates to waste and recycling. By choosing Athens, you'll create a new competitive local market. We intend to negotiate with all of the current resources for a competitive price. Note that they will not negotiate with us until you make a decision for change because they don't have to. Currently, we service Santa Paula, and they have the same competitive rates we have offered Thousand Oaks. We use Toll and Road Landfill and Del Norte Recycling, both located in your county, and both much more competitive than your current supply chain. That's how we can provide lower rates. Athens commits to work with your local infrastructure if they're interested in being a part of our family. That includes processing, recovery, and landfill. We feel our competitive spirit will stimulate the local supply chain and bring a fresh look with innovation in an arena that's ready for change. Athens commits to you that we have submitted our best proposal, one that we stand by, guarantee, and one that will provide great relief for your residents and businesses while providing brand-new equipment and new recycling programs. Your staff and consultants' diligent background and reference checks should prove to you that Athens is the right choice for your community. Our pricing reflects the fact that you allowed a long-term approach to the RFP process, including fifteen years to amortize our costs. It also reflects our internal process improvements provided by our infrastructure, systems, and best-in-class employees. In addition to submitting a competitive price, the Athens proposal is ranked number one by our evaluation team, including qualifications, experience, and reputation, technical approach, sustainability, diversion, and outreach, and most important, customer service. Our proposal stands alone as the best-in-class. This is just a small sample of what we can do for you as we transition from what was to what will be. Our proposal is accurate, complete, and responsive, and we agree to all terms and conditions. As a representative of the Eric Killian family and the family of employees that make up this incredible company, I want to thank you for this opportunity and promise you that we will deliver on the commitment that we made in our proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. And next we have Caesar Torres, followed by Elizabeth Ramirez.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Villalpina, Mayor Protan Engler, and Councilmembers Adam Jones and McNamee. McNamee, I'm sorry. My name is Caesar Torres. I'm the Vice, Executive Vice President for Athens Services. And I'm here tonight to ask for your support for the staff recommendation to approve the exclusive solid waste franchise agreement with Athens Services. Your staff worked hard and diligently evaluating our proposal. As you know, many months were spent vetting out all points of the RFP. At the end, Athens, time and again, scored the highest in the evaluation. We are committed, if selected, to make this a smooth transition backed by many years of exceptional service that have earned us the best-in-class reputation. As part of our transitional plan, Athens vows to protect all of the local jobs and will interview and hire employees that are currently servicing your community. These employees are an important part of our, of your past, and we would be proud to have them continue servicing your customers. In fact, our proposal includes hiring at their current or higher wages and awarding each driver a hundred, $10,000 bonus as an incentive to join the Athens family. As you know, we followed this RFP process from the beginning, during your deliberations, and we took copious notes. We submitted a proposal that met all requirements and we stand firmly by our submission. You can see how serious we are about public outreach by the fact that we opened a local office at the, as we call it, a sustainability center. This center will facilitate the transition, house our customer service department, and Thousand Oaks residents will be able to learn more about recycling, pay their bills, or ask general questions. We will employ local citizens in the office as we move forward, increasing our footprint in the local area. Along with flawless transition, with a flawless transition process, the city of Thousand Oaks will benefit from the following. Brand-new, near-zero emission trucks that operate on renewable natural gas and equipment that meets the new state mandates. Streets sweeping operated by Athens Services, allowing us to coordinate better timing between curbside waste pickup and cleaning the streets. Live dashboards to view waste hauling trucks real-time. Forty-five recycle coordinators that will visit businesses in person and help maximize the recycling opportunities and minimize costs. The local sustainability and customer service center in the area employed with Thousand Oaks residents that know the community. We will keep all of our purchases and employment opportunities local. As you can clearly see, we are here to help assist the city of Thousand Oaks remain one of California's most desirable places to live, work, visit, and raise a family, all while providing essential infrastructure, infrastructure that meets the goals of the city. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council, and I look forward to hopefully servicing your community for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Ramirez, followed by Jessica Aldridge.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Liz Ramirez and I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Athens Services. I'm here tonight to express my excitement and enthusiasm for the process you've embarked on in developing a new waste and recycling program for your wonderful city of Thousand Oaks. I have to say first off that communication is key for a program of this magnitude to be successful, both in the transition and throughout the life of the contract. One thing that sets Athens apart from other vendors is how we engage with and communicate to our customers. With our team of over forty-five recycling coordinators, all of your customers will be visited and have a point of contact. Somebody in the field who can help your businesses with any waste-related questions or recycling support is needed. Our boots-on-the-ground approach has been invaluable to us and has been successful for many of the other communities we service in Southern California. We also developed a robust virtual training toolbox and a wide range of collateral tools to support our recycling trading. We recognize at Athens that training isn't a one-size-fits-all approach, but rather a process which we continuously evolve with to work with our customers until they are on a path to success. We opened our Sustainability Center in Thousand Oaks this past year, a facility that will serve as the hub for outreach and education in the city during the transition as well as remain an office for the community to visit once the transition is complete. This facility is the first of its kind. And for the first time, Thousand Oaks residents will be able to conduct business in person while gaining valuable recycling and reuse information and education. I do have to say that Athens also has a great government embarrassed team, one that will be at your disposal. We work around the clock to ensure our city partners have the support needed. We provide guidance and support to staff and council with matters relating to CalRecycle, waste and recycling legislation, and any other support the city may need as it relates to our programming. I'm excited that you are considering Athens to be your new partner. Our team has worked very hard over the last several months with staff to work through the details of the program, ultimately developing the program in front of you tonight. At Athens, when we begin servicing a city, we become part of the community we service. Our partnership with Thousand Oaks extends beyond the waste and recycling services we provide. We will become part of the fabric of your community. As a leader in environmental sustainability, we are committed to providing the support needed to be a strong partner for the city of Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much for your Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. And the next speaker for Athens is Jessica Aldridge, followed by Matt Troutz. Good evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening, there we go, good evening, and thank you to the Honorable Mayor and members of Thousand Oaks City Council. I am Jessica Aldridge, the Director of Sustainability and Zero Waste Programs for Athens Services. I've been with Athens for almost 10 years, and my title is, is one that you don't really hear very often in the waste industry. My position is a testament to Athens' longstanding commitment to the environment and the communities that we serve. I helped to design the materials and the strategies for our outreach and education and our zero-waste programs, including what was provided to you in the Thousand Oaks proposal. Our programs are designed for success, based in experience, and rooted in collaborative partnerships with the city, with Public Works, and also the community. That's very important. Thousand Oaks is not a cookie-cutter franchise agreement that's deserving of stale outreach programs. Thousand Oaks deserves out-of-the-box strategies and the support necessary to be Southern California's zero-waste-leading city. We recognize our role and responsibility. We do not wait until it's required of us like other competitors. We create outstanding, cutting-edge programs for our city partners, and some of those include our multi-family recycling ambassador program. We have a food scrap recycling program for apartments. We have a K-12 zero-waste school manual, the creation of a web-based, interactive What-Goes-Rare recycling guide with Recyclist. And we also have, and I'm very excited about, we have a proven four-part, integrated food donation program that is meant to elevate and grow community resources. And, and that's just, that's just a few things. We recognize the important role in educating our youth, which is why we want to support the building of community gardens at schools and help teach kids to be stewards of the earth. We also want holistic solutions that don't just solely focus on recycling and composting. We honor the importance of upstream solutions to reduce waste and reuse as much as possible, and this message is embedded into our outreach, our materials, our training, our online guides, and even the idea of supporting fix-it-repair clinics in the city. So, as the Director of Sustainability and Zero Waste Programs, I and the whole team at Athens Services, we have the experience, and we have the intimate knowledge of what is required for a city like Thousand Oaks, and I, I want to thank you for this opportunity. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the last representative from Athens is Matt Troutz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Matthew Troutz. I am a 30-year resident of the Canejo Valley. I currently live here in Thousand Oaks with my beautiful wife, Rachel, my sons Lucky and Jake, and our, and our dogs. I've been in the industry for about 25 years doing trash and recycling, and I found a home at Athens a long time ago. And the reason I did is because we're a very like-minded group of folks. We are environmentalists. We love what we do, and we love where we do it. Living in this community, I've always thought, man, we are just so lucky to live here. It's incredible. It's beautiful. It's, it's, it's everything that you would design a city if you were to start from scratch, as far as I'm concerned. I feel blessed to live here. I also feel really fortunate to work with a company like Athens Services. You know the word, family, family businesses get tossed around quite a bit, but in our halls, it truly is a family feeling. We are a giant group of like-minded environmentalists that want to work with our communities. We want to recycle. I, I have the pleasure of working at the Sustainability Center in my hometown. We're at 225-1000 Oaks Boulevard. I'm right across from the lakes. It's the best location, and since we've opened, we've had so much interaction from our community. People come in with their masks, socially distancing, with questions about recycling and composting and upstream diversion, meaning talking about packaging before we need to recycle it. And, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a pleasure to do that inside of our community. So, you know, we've been a business since 1957. That's a long time. We started with one truck, and the amount of recycling we've done for Southern California is outrageous, and we're very proud of that. It's what we do at Athens. You know, to talk to the drivers out there, I, I was a driver once. I drove for about a decade, and I can tell the drivers at any other company that if we are awarded this contract, guys, just get ready, man, we're going to spoil you. We do currently, our drivers, we, it, it's safety, environment, service, and people. That's what we do at Athens, guys. Please come and visit me at the Sustainability Center. I want to thank the Madam Mayor and our City Council, and my neighbors, and my friends, and everyone that got behind us on this. So, thank you, and here's a little shout-out to my neighbors and friends. If by chance we are awarded this contract, we're not going to let you guys down. You have my word. I'm a 30-year resident. I take this stuff as seriously as you can. We got your back, Thousand Oaks. If you give us the chance, you will not be sorry. Please come see us at the Sustainability Center, 225-1000 Oaks Boulevard. Thank you, and just thank you, guys. We're really grateful.
Thank you. And we now go to several representatives of Harrison and Waste Management. First one will be Mike Harrison, followed by Lynn Harrison, and then Jim Harrison. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This is Mike Harrison. I am the Engineering Manager with EJ Harrison &amp; Sons. It, it sounds too good to be true, as we've all heard in quotes already, but when this process began... I'm sorry. Can you see me now?
No, we can.
Okay. When this process began, the council stated they wanted to go out to bid because they've never done it before. Made sense. But they stated that they weren't going to go for the lowest price, and they were going to go for the best value, and it really appears that the staff has done the exact opposite. The goals and policies of the T.O. general plan are set up so the city can maintain a reputation as leader in protecting the environment. And if you can see through the smoke and mirrors, you might see differently. Given these objectives, we were shocked to see that the selected proposal was from, for out-of-county services. And just for some context, in 2013, a rate study was prepared for the city. It was found that the city rates were in the middle range of nearby cities, and the existing rates were unreasonable compared to other cities. The standard residential rate at that time was 29.05. Now, almost 10 years later, the proposed rate will be 16% lower than it was 10 years ago with more services. It's interesting that nobody has presented a case or an evaluation of how that is so. Facility planning is also critical, and a critical component in obtaining the goals of this procurement process. According to staff and local media quotes, does not appear the selected proposal has a local facility plan. We've heard it already that they're hoping to find a partnership. There, the staff report shows that the proposed truck yard is in Santa Paula, at an address that is not even allowed for such a use. Now, we hear that it's Sun Valley, or it might be somewhere else. We really don't know. So, how are the VMTs really evaluated when they don't know where their truck yard is going to be? And an interesting note, too, that they're going to pay drivers to come to them for $10,000, but they failed to, to talk about the fact these drivers are going to be living in places like Oxnard, so they're going to have to drive to Sun Valley to pick up a truck, and then they're going to have to drive home from Sun Valley when their day is done. Doesn't sound like a, a great deal for them. But regardless of the location, their operation is going to be driving tens of millions of more miles over the life of this contract. It only takes about 40 extra miles a day, and these trucks are going to be commuting back and forth multiple times in a highly intense traffic condition that's going to add multiple hours to their day. And those multiple hours are going to be spent driving and not on the route. So, it's hard to fathom that they're going to be having the same number of routes.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Your time is up. We will now go to Lynn Harrison, followed by Jim Harrison.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name's Lynn Harrison. I'm EJ Harrison, I'm General Manager. Yes, I, I would like to address some of the concerns that I have before you tonight, also related to the proposed yard and the environmental impact of the truck traffic in Ventura County. Question is, where would the Athens trucks travel to and from, as Mike mentioned? The Acorn article stated that Athens plans to store 40 trucks in Sun Valley, and a quote, "40-minute drive in rush hour to go 38 miles is an unrealistic estimation of time." Most route drivers will haul two loads a day. If the Athens trucks are going to and from Sun Valley twice a day, the actual trip time would be more like two to five hours a day of road time. In the RFP proposal to the city of Thousand Oaks, Athens states the 40-plus trucks will be housed in a small, one-acre parcel located on Ojai Street in Santa Paula. This proposed yard would be an environmental nuisance and create major traffic problems for the residents in that area of Santa Paula. Why would someone put this in an RFP if it's unapproved? If these 40 Athens trucks are traveling through Santa Paula en route to Thousand Oaks, what route are they going to take? These questions haven't been answered. The Acorn also states that Athens Services was recently chosen by the city of Santa Paula to handle the waste. This is a misleading statement. The Santa Paula franchise agreement was included in the purchase when Athens bought some of Recology's Los Angeles service areas. Due to that purchase, Athens received the consent to assignment from the city of Santa Paula in 2017. But to allow the city staff time to reevaluate and write an RFP in transition, the city of Santa Paula, City Council voted to extend their franchise agreement with Athens for two years to May 31, 2022. I would request that the city postpone the vote and look into some of these items that have not been addressed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jim Harrison, followed by Monica White, and then Evan Edgar.
Hello, my name's Jim Harrison. I'm the Vice President of EJ Harrison &amp; Sons. I've been in the trash business virtually my whole life. I, my father and mother had the business before I was even born. They, I worked in the company off and on. My father believed in a lot of work. He wanted everyone to do more than their share. I went in the army when I was 18 years old, came back home, and went worked at various jobs. I went back to work for the trash company when I was 22 years old. So, I've seen everything. It's been a great life. I, I was around great people. My parents were wonderful, wonderful, honorable people. I think that some of the things that I've been concerned about, I've seen changes, I've seen burn dumps go away, I've seen convenient things changed, seen AB-939 came. When AB-939 came, first we heard 25% reduction, then we heard 50% reduction, and that's where it ended up. The problem is, when they did 939, is they forgot the marketplace. The marketplace could not take that large a number, you know, could not sell that material. We built a transfer station processing center in 1990 to process the material for all of our cities. It was a struggle. It was a struggle for 10 or 15 years to try to get the plant in the block. It was very difficult because, because of the marketplace. Today, it's one of the best facilities in Southern California. It's done really well. It's very busy. It never has not processed, it never has not marketed. It never has been on the verge of closing. If you look around Southern California, you'll see that many have closed, many don't, aren't processing during the virus. We never close. I think that all of our cities have met the mandate. Even with the one thing that's pretty important for people to understand, the, the idea of 939 was to preserve landfill capacity. Today, all these years later, we have a surplus of landfill capacity. I think another thing was to reduce waste. It was to manufacture things with the waste that we were recycling. This is what's really happened. The waste stream has increased, recycling has decreased, landfilling has increased. So, that don't sound very good, does it? But at Harrison's goal codes and our cities, with the waste stream increasing, we have increased recycling, and all of our cities have met the mandate because we have recycled more due to the waste stream. I think another big thing that happened in the, probably one of the biggest things that's going on today, thing that I'm probably the most concerned about, is the organics bill, 338.
Mr. Harrison, your, your time is up.
Yeah, the cycle bill. I think that if you look into it deeply, very, very difficult to meet, meet the mandate. If you look at the waste stream, what the waste stream is, and we've done that, and look at what's possible to get out, source separation, you find out you cannot get it out that way. You're going to have to go in deeper than that, so it's going to be a tremendous amount of work. Our proposal to the city, our RFP proposal, includes the cost of doing everything we need to do to meet that requirement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Monica White, followed by Evan Edgar, and then Nan Drake.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you very much for allowing me the opportunity to speak, and there's definitely a few things I would like to touch on and raise as issues and concerns as I review this staff report. Firstly, as Jim mentioned, 1383 requires a significant investment in our operations. It is changing the face of our solid waste. It requires investment in your collection, your auditing, reporting, outreach costs that universally across the state are increasing rates. R3 knows this. They've done a study for CalRecycle based upon this, where we independently track franchise rates and have seen significant increases. I would like to remind City Council that SB 1383 would result in $10,000 per day worth of fines for noncompliance. Those fines are not covered by your hauler, nor is the city exempt from those fines should your hauler fail to perform. A touch on costs, there were some cost numbers thrown around. All of these haulers presented here have the same infrastructure costs. We're all buying the same number of trucks. We're all buying the same number of containers. We all hope to provide living wages for our drivers. We're all paying the same to our outreach consultants. Trying to reconcile the costs that Athens has provided is mind-boggling, considering the amount of work that must be done. Not only that, their operational plan is confusing. Either there is a site in Santa Paula that is not owned by Tim Finnegan, as stated in the staff report, that is not permitted to have those vehicles stationed there and would negatively affect the citizens. And also, please note, Council, that you cannot exempt that site from CEQA within this vote. That would require a completely different level of environmental review. Additionally, if those vehicles are being parked in Sun Valley, what we're discussing, as was brought up by Mike's comments, is there's, it's an impossibility to hire displaced drivers who are working in this local community that would have to drive to Sun Valley where trucks would be fueling their RNG. The RNG, again, is, this is a confusing proposal, Council. Is the RNG based in Sun Valley where the operations are? If the trucks are based in Santa Paula, where is the RNG infrastructure that Athens is claiming? There's no public infrastructure to support these number of vehicles, and we know because we called and asked. This is a 15-year contract that is designed to bring the City Council up to par with the requirements of 1383. Staff has not provided a transparent and adequate review of all of the proposers. The vast majority of key points and benefits of this contract are the same between all proposers. I will note that the signing bonuses that was discussed earlier by Council, that is a nuance and also not featured within the staff report. It is fully irresponsible for Athens to provide this type of cost for this city to meet the requirements of 1383, and City Council deserves the opportunity to transparently and verify all bids that were provided for the city of Thousand Oaks. The city should not move forward with Athens and instead request more information and request a company that would not negatively impact the environment or the community, which is what you're seeing here through the smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. It is Women's History Month, and this is what working moms do, children and work at the same time.
I will also note, I do have a babysitter here, but I think she lost track of my toddler.
No problem. No problem. I know what it's like. So next up, we have Evan Edgar, followed by Nan Drake and Steve Lee.
Am I up?
Mr. Edgar, yes, you are.
Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my name is Evan Edgar. I'm an engineer in Sacramento, representing statewide trade associations and public and private companies over the decades on hauling, recycling, and composting issues. I'm intimately involved with SB thirteen eighty-three from the concept, the policy, the law, the regulations, implementation for the last five years here in Sacramento, working at the State Capitol and CalRecycle on how to pull off thirteen eighty-three. It's a big lift. Plus, I've been citing facilities for over thirty years statewide, so I know what it takes to permit compost facilities, yards, and recycling facilities. I've been involved with four major studies in Sacramento here about thirteen eighty-three cost and pricing. The first one was done by CalRecycle as part of the SB thirteen eighty-three regulatory impact assessment in 2019. What it said, based upon a theoretical cost, that the average monthly business cost would increase by seventy to ninety dollars per month on the business side. Residential costs would increase three to five bucks per month to do thirteen eighty-three. And another study performed by R3 was released just in October 2020, where it was for the SB thirteen eighty-three local services rate impacts. And what they came up with was that the average business monthly cost would increase by a hundred and forty bucks per month, and average residence cost would increase two to thirteen bucks per month. The League of Cities did a survey last month, and they released a survey. What the League of Cities said, that ninety-two percent of the cities expect a rate increase, and forty percent of those cities expect a forty percent to one hundred percent rate increase. Following the case studies of twelve different cities statewide that have adopted new rates for thirteen eighty-three, the average monthly business cost has increased two hundred bucks per month to 2025, and the average residence has increased from nine bucks per month to 2025. So all these studies, from theoretical to regulatory, to surveys and actual, we see a big rate increase. The reason being is that SB thirteen eighty-three will cost about two to three billion in infrastructure cost, and then another twenty billion in operational cost. So they gotta have a cost increase to comply with thirteen eighty-three. What we've seen Athens proposing their magical economics with export out of county, they're actually decreasing rates at a time when they should be increasing. The four other cities in Athens, the residential rate is sixty, thirty-six bucks per month, where the two proposals are down to thirty-three, which is reasonable. I think Athens is offering discount pricing in order to win the contract. And what we've seen in these other cities, that they have a seventy-five percent rate increase over ten years, where the CPo is only thirty percent. So what I recommend is that Athens' bid is not legitimate for thirteen eighty-three in an era to gain market share as a loss leader. The Senate wrong signal state right about thirteen eighty-three implementation. This is not a race to the bottom. We need to rise to the top of local sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Nan Drake. And then Nan Drake will be followed by two representatives for Waste Management, Steve Lee and Doug Corcoran, and then also Bill Camarillo Agarman. I also want to say to my colleagues and staff that after we hear from Bill Camarillo, we will actually go back to staff so we can respond to the candidates' statements and comments that were made, or at least those who participated in the RFP process. All right. Go ahead, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Nan Drake. Familiar to many of you. I am the Director of Public Relations and Governmental Affairs for EJ Harrison Sons, Gold Coast Recycling, and Agarman. As a former Ventura City Council member, a former Chair of the L.A. Region Water Poly Board, and a former member of the Integrated Waste Management Board in Sacramento, I, like you, have had to make many difficult public decisions. And I know tonight that you're trying to do what is best for your constituents. I only hope that you remember what was said at the last meeting when trash contracts were on the agenda. It's not about price, but it's about best value. And I think that is the real question here tonight. Is this agreement following your own sustainability plan? Is trucking out of county the environmentally correct thing to do? The toll and landfill can't accept out-of-county tons. And we are in the permitting process for a major commercial compost facility at Limoneira, which also cannot accept out-of-county tons. This facility that we are building will handle all of the county and the city of Ventura County's organic tons, and will make it our own in our own county. I think that is something that we need to look at because what you do today will reflect on every city in the county. They are all depending on a gathering of tons to do the right thing. You are moving your tons away from your own county and putting them in Los Angeles in most cases. This does not seem to me to be the environmentally correct thing. I want to close by just saying that the Harrisons have been in business for ninety years in this county. And if they aren't on number one on your list of respected companies in this county, I would be shocked because they have always done the right thing. They have a tradition of doing the right thing. Their customers don't just like them, they love them. Our drivers stop for children and run their arms up and down for them. They wave. They bring birthday presents to some of them because they know them so well. We are part of the community. We deserve that. You look at this proposal closely. You reexamine it. You listen to what others have to say. I only want you to do this because I care about your city like I care about all of the cities in the county. I have worked thirty years in this industry to get us where we are today in this county. I'm proud of our whole county, and I want you to be part of it. So please, please, relook at this decision and get more information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Drake. Next, we have Steve Lee with Waste Management, followed by Doug Corcoran, and then finally, Bill Camarillo.
Hello, everybody. I hope I'm getting a little background noise. I'm sorry. Honorable Mayor, Council Members and Staff, my name my name is Steve Lee. I am a twenty-four-year local resident of Newberry Park. Hang on, I have to mute this. Hang on, very sorry. My name is Steve Lee. I'm a twenty-four-year local resident of Newberry Park. I'm also the District Manager for Waste Management GI Industries, located locally in Simi Valley for the last forty-two years. My team of more than two hundred employees, number one goal is to deliver the highest quality and reliable service to the residents and businesses of Thousand Oaks. For more than fifty years, our customers have become a part of the Waste Management family, and we don't want to end our relationship. As an essential service provider, we have been here for Thousand Oaks through it all. Earthquakes, fires, the borderline tragedy, and most recently, the pandemic, with which we all still are in the in the middle of this year. Our customers rely on us to show up week after week to provide the service we promise, and that, I am very proud to say, we have been here for you, Thousand Oaks, every single day. We are your environmental solutions provider, and we work together to do whatever it takes to get the job done. We have embraced the new state mandate laws and adapted to help Thousand Oaks achieve your goals. We always felt that we have had a professional working relationship with staff, and we hope to continue to collaborate with staff in the future. We are looking at a bigger picture here in Ventura County, and choosing to go outside of Ventura County for solutions has many questions and impacts. Why is it important? The plan staff is recommending will change disposal choices and eventually result in a huge financial impact to the county of Ventura, while adding thousands of additional road miles to collection vehicles completing services for the city of Thousand Oaks. Are the proposal rates for the staff report realistic? Is this sustainable? This is a question I hope we don't find out the hard way. I ask that the council oppose staff's recommendation and allow the proven longstanding collaboration between Waste Management and the city of Thousand Oaks to be maintained. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up, we have Doug Corcoran, followed by Bill Camarillo. And Mr. Corcoran is with Waste Management, and Mr. Camarillo with Agarman.
Right. Thank you, Mayor Bill de la Peña, and City Council members. I'm Doug Corcoran, eight thirty-four Emerson Street here in Thousand Oaks. I work for Waste Management, as you said, and I just want to start by saying we are grateful. We thank the city for all the years. We want more years with you. But don't think based on our comments that we do not completely and utterly appreciate you and all the time that we have spent here and the trust you've placed in us. Tonight, I'm here to ask you to postpone your decision on the selection of a new hauler for thirty days. Now, I know that feels like a big ask, and I wouldn't ask it if I didn't have compelling concerns about the proposal by Athens and about the process that has brought everybody here tonight. Now, we appreciate the work and the professionalism of R3. I know Richard Tagore very well. I've seen him quite a bit, and he's always very professional. And also of Helen Cox and her staff. And nothing we're saying tonight is meant to disparage any of the work. But there is a lot of questions, and I think maybe it was the structure of the RFP and the process that left a lot of questions unexplored, and we feel call for the requested delay. So let me jump in. I'm not gonna, I'm gonna try not to repeat what some of the other folks have said, but the rates cannot be overlooked as the way they are presented. And frankly, the rates proposed by Athens have no tether to the reality of providing service in Thousand Oaks. They're a complete swing and a miss. And anything, rates like this that are so out of touch, we think should cast suspicion on the rest of their proposal and the statements and assertions they've made in that proposal. The fact is, there's no place in California where rates are being rolled back like Athens is proposing here to implement SB thirteen eighty-three. It's an unprecedented level of new services required by that regulation. I mean, think about this. The new contract calls for unprecedented service levels, unprecedented outreach requirements, unprecedented processing requirements. They also, it also requires a thirty million dollar investment in vehicles, containers, much more staff than you've ever seen before. And then add to that the fact that Athens has to drive sixty to seventy miles from their remote yards in other communities where they're gonna have to add trucks there, and I don't know if they've talked to those communities about that. You know, the fact is, we all get our trucks from the same place. We get our containers from the same places, our fuel. It's, I mean, the actual cost structure in this business is very similar from company to company. And so we have to ask ourselves, how in heaven's name can they cut rates like they're proposing? And I would assert that they cannot. They can't do it. The, you've heard something, some comments about an old-school tactic that was used in L.A. County, and I will say Athens, I've seen them, I've been working in L.A. County and Ventura County for thirty-five years. And Athens is very good at this tactic, and it really is to roll in with a loss leader and then work the rates up over time. Now, I heard staff say that you've got a contract that's ironclad, and you don't have to worry about that, but I would respectfully disagree with that conclusion. I read your contract, or the contract for Athens, and I read that section, and honestly, I see a very liberal reopening opportunity down the road, and that will be exploited. I can guarantee it.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran.
Okay.
Your time is up. Next up, we have Bill Camarillo with Agarman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Bill Camarillo. I live in Camarillo, California, and I've grown up in Ventura County my whole life. I am the CEO of Agarman. We are probably one of the largest organic waste recyclers in the state of California, spanning from the Mexican border all the way through Sacramento, serving well over fifteen counties and over two hundred communities throughout the state. And I've seen lots of RFPs, and I've never seen one process like this. Some of the bigger cities have always taken the top three-point getters in this example and negotiated with all three to make sure all the questions were answered and all the rocks were turned over to ensure that the winner could be able to do what they did. I'm not here to talk about that as much as I'm here to protect sustainable Ventura County. I have been serving the community of Thousand Oaks since it started its yard waste programs many, many years ago. Over the last decade, we had been developing infrastructure in Ventura County with the assistance of Thousand Oaks Support with the County for permitting not only of the Limoneira facility, but to correct one thing about facilities in Ventura County, we have the city surrounded. We have organics facilities in Calabasas, Simi Valley, Oxnard, Santa Paula, and a newly opened food waste to animal feed project in the city of Oxnard that will begin operations in October. So when it was said earlier in the presentation that there was no permitted food waste operations in Ventura County, that was a misstatement. I'm concerned about all of the commitment of all the other cities to developing this infrastructure in Ventura County to support SB thirteen eighty-three. It's a very cumbersome bill. It's gonna be very expensive, and if you've had to build anything in Ventura County, you would know that everything in Ventura County takes forever, and it's very expensive. So for the two incumbent haulers, they had no intention of ever hauling the city's waste out of the county, and were going to use Ventura County infrastructure and priced it appropriately. Athens is a customer of Agarman today. Never once did they contact us and ask if they could bring those tons to any of the five Agarman facilities that could support the city's local supportive local jobs, local green jobs, local innovation in the county, green infrastructure. There's gonna be a loss of local business in Ventura County, increased greenhouse gas emissions, increased traffic impacts, and increased impacts of disadvantaged communities. It was amazing to hear that woman speak earlier in public comments about affordable housing, wanting to live in Thousand Oaks. All the workers live in Santa Paula and Oxnard, and Athens is proposing to haul because that's where their facilities are out of L.A. They would never have a chance to work and be able to continue to live in a beautiful place like Ventura County. I also am asking that you postpone this decision, relook at those proposals, and add add using Ventura County infrastructure, and I believe that you will see all the rates will be very comparable, focusing on a sustainable Ventura County and not hauling your waste out of the county. I know my time's probably up. I'm committed to Thousand Oaks just like everybody else, as I serve on many boards, as you may know. And I wish you would really reconsider your decision tonight and give it some more thought. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I will take everything back I said about going to staff after the candidate speak. I've been told there was a miscommunication, and so we will continue with public speakers, of whom we do have many. We will continue with Shannon Blommer on video, followed by Kat Selm and Mike Leibin. Good evening. So if we don't have Shannon, then we will go to Kat Selm, if we can do that, followed by Mike Leibin.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, Kat Selm. Good evening.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Thank you so much for listening to me speak tonight. My name is Kat, and I'm a resident in Thousand Oaks. I want to commend the city for doing its part to reduce waste and emissions by including green waste services. This contract is a step in the right direction in complying with the state law SB thirteen eighty-three and reducing our collective footprint. Landfills generate about twenty percent of the methane in California, which is a greenhouse gas that's eighty-four times more potent than CO2. By composting wasted food and other organics, methane emissions are significantly reduced. I also commend the standardized bin colors, the outreach component of this contract in the clean fuel vehicles. However, I would like to hear where the contractor receives its renewable natural gas. As good as this step is, I urge the council and the Sustainability Office to As good as this step is, I urge the council and the Sustainability Office to think about the additional requirements of SB 1383, as well as its broader implications on society. In addition to the waste stream diversion targets, the law also requires that 20% of edible food currently wasted is recovered for human consumption. According to the California Association of Food Banks, 1 in 8, or 4.6 million Californians are food insecure, including 1 in 5 children. At the same time, more than 5.5 million tons of food waste are disposed in California landfills each year. Let's take this requirement for compliance and turn it into an opportunity to model a healthy and sustainable vision for other California cities. I suggest we do this by incorporating organic waste diversion into a multi-benefit initiative, including feeding hungry people, producing clean energy and healthy soil, and reducing climate and air pollution. We can do this by developing plans to divert edible food waste from the landfill and feed people in need in coordination with haulers and nonprofits. To reduce our carbon footprint and increase food resiliency, we can encourage a buy-local program campaign for produce, enact a local food ordinance, or incentive, incentivize farm-to-school programs. Education and outreach about food waste reduction, as well as continual education about proper disposal of green waste, will be critical in meeting these goals. Again, I want to thank the city for negotiating, renegotiating this contract, and I look forward to having a green waste bin at my residence, and to further discussing these ideas with staff at the CAPP and general plant update process as it proceeds. Thank you for your time, and I'll yield the rest of mine.
Thank you. We now go back to Shannon Blommer, followed by Mike Leibin. Hi there.
Hi. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm a resident to this wonderful city of Thousand Oaks, and I would like to start off by saying I commend the City Council for bringing this to our community. I support Athens for so many reasons, mainly their competitive pricing, in which we could all use at this time right now, and also their outreach to the local schools for their after-school programs, in which I have children that attend our wonderful public schools. All of these things are very beneficial, and this is why I support it, and I surely hope you do too. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mike Leibin, followed by Carrie Lutz and Karen Sandvik.
Mike Leibin, Thousand Oaks. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this issue. First, I'd like to thank the City Council for the diligence demonstrated in their request for proposals process. It's clear, based on the information posted on the Thousand Oaks City website and the information here tonight, that the recommended bidder, Athens Services, submitted the bid that is the best deal for all of the residents and businesses in the city of Thousand Oaks. I believe another important aspect of this bid is the fact that Athens Services is committed to being an active member in our community by supporting our schools. There are details in the bid that include a $200,000 per year donation to the schools in the community over the 15-year life of the contract. This is definitely a time, and we need the funding the most. Thank you to the City Council for conducting a process that yielded better rates for our businesses and residents, as well as found a good community partner who took the time to identify the needs of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carrie Lutz, followed by Karen Sandvik, and then Denise Poonbunryong.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Lutz. I reside in Moore Park, but I run a Thousand Oaks business. I run Tireman. It appears, and I want to thank the City Council for what appears to be a great job that they've done in sending this out to bid and making it a competitive bid that will help us as business owners and residents of the city of Thousand Oaks and the surrounding areas. Costs keep going up on everything, and it's great to see that things have become a little bit more competitive, and that these businesses have to win these contracts, and that it appears that Athens is going to do a great job for us as far as reducing the overhead and the cost of doing business in the city of Thousand Oaks. It appears that they've done a very good job and a very thorough bid, and it appears that we should have lower costs, as well as helping our schools and our local businesses. We thank you, and thank you, City Council, for doing a great job on sending this out to bid, and we look forward to the next 15 years. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and you do a great job with Tireman, too.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Sandvik, followed by Denise Poonbunryong, and please forgive me if I mispronounce that last name, and then Christian Melger.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council members. Karen Sandvik, 25-year resident in the city of Thousand Oaks. I'd like to first thank you for providing the tools to staff to conduct this RFP process. I read the staff report, and it occurred to me that our current hauler and incumbents, they, they had the opportunity to sharpen their pencils and to provide some creative programs, and they didn't do that. And then, as I continued to read the staff report, I actually got excited about the thought of a family-owned company joining our Caneo Valley family. They're offering reduced rates at a time where a lot of families really need that help. They've obviously shown us they can do a lot of recycling and upcycling programs, which is also very exciting. And on top of everything, they have gone one step above that, and they're making a financial investment in our community, in our schools, our students, our kids, and that's a really big deal. It really is. So I'm asking you tonight to award this contract to Athens Services, because I sincerely believe they are a breath of fresh air for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Denise Poonbunryong, followed by Christian Melger, and then Brian. Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I just want to, you know, give my thoughts on the subject at hand. I live in Thousand Oaks. I work in Newbury Park. I am a single mother of two, and a couple of things that really stood out for me with the Athens situation is food waste recycling and just the reducing cost to citizens, and I really hope that Athens is able to move forward with this contract. And as it's, you know, been mentioned before, you know, we've given lots of opportunities to, you know, change things up. We've had the same, you know, providers for, I think, 20 years. It's, it's time for a change. It's time to see what fresh, you know, fresh blood can bring in, so I'm very excited, and I hope that you'll really consider awarding this to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian Melger, followed by Brian, and then Robert Edward on the phone.
Oh, here I am. Sorry about that. Yeah, Christian Melger, Madam Mayor, thank you for having me on. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. So, I'm a resident, I relocated to Thousand Oaks 11 years ago, and I'm actually also a Realtor, so I deal with owners all the time. And obviously, especially this last year, I've seen what pricing and competitive really means to us, and like, when I saw that, that there can be an advantage for the homeowner, I jumped right on it, and I started reading more about it. And just like any other business, they evolve. Like, I, I don't see how my business has evolved, everyone has evolved, and when it comes to competitive pricing, it's not, I understand quality, what they've all said, and like, what they've done for over, over years, but sometimes it takes another company to come in and kind of shake things up, and not, not just because they're new, they're not going to be an advantage to us, but more like, maybe they're doing something that, or looked at something that the other people aren't doing, because it's done here, in and out for them. So, for me, I like Athens just for that, like, they, they're shaking it up a little bit and just benefiting us, and if they can cut the cost on homeowners, especially moving out here, it's not cheap. That's an advantage for me, so that's all I want to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brian is joining us via video, followed by Robert Edward on the phone, and then Maria Byer on video.
Hi, Brian Albertson, longtime resident of the Caneo Valley for 40-plus years. I just want to thank the City Council for putting the trash contract to bid, thanks to the staff for all their hard work. I do think the staff's recommendation is definitely going to save a significant amount of money, and the fact that it's going to do the right thing for the environment, too, I think that's a rare thing, that you're actually saving money and doing the right thing. You know, you think about it, you go to Whole Foods, and you try to buy organic, it's always like, two to three times more expensive. It's rare that you could have, you know, a progressive policy that is a lot less money for the, the ratepayers. So, I'm looking forward to Athens recycling programs. They've got a great reputation. I think they really fit the new mold of Thousand Oaks and what we're becoming. And I think, you know, the other companies had the opportunity to bid, the competitive process yielded, you know, these results that Athens be recommended, and I would ask the City Council to approve the staff's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Edward, followed by Daniel Joseph, and both on the phone.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council members. I would like to thank you for actually putting this process together. Anytime you have a longstanding relationship with, whether it be a company or a vendor, change can be difficult, so I applaud your decision to try to make some change. I also commend Dr. Cox and her staff. I had no idea that this much forward-thinking and due diligence was put in to this type of contract. I really thought it was just going to be, you know, who can, who can come up with the tastiest bid and, you know, hope for the best, but her staff's recommendations seem like they've really done their due diligence, and in turn, it's going to save, you know, us taxpayers here, and, you know, I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks now for almost 28 years. Sometimes competition is good for our city, and then the result will be the best deal for us here in Thousand Oaks. I'm looking forward to Athens recycling and their program. It seems like they, they really are committed to it. I like the fact that they're family-owned, that they're a company that was born and based here in Southern California. Other companies seem to have had the opportunity to put their bid in place, but maybe they became complacent after being in place for so many decades. And that complacency is now, tonight at the 11th hour, it sounds a little bit like sour grapes on their part. You know, they're pleased of, you know, oh, let us rebid this, or let us do this. You know, they had their opportunity. This has been a 19-month process. The city needs a change that's going to save us money, put us in the right direction environmentally. I, I implore the City Council to make the obvious decision and move over to Athens. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Joseph on the phone, and then going back to video with Albert Krikjian and Roseanne Witt.
Thank you, Mayor de la Peña, and thank you, Council members, for taking the time to listen to my opinion on this situation. I'm not generally somebody who gets involved in these types of things, but when I started to do a little bit deeper dive on it, I was really impressed at what was going on, and, and then the presentation put together by the staff was fantastic. I, I'm really excited about the tech that they're bringing forward, and, you know, the CNG, that's, that's huge. You know, coming from automotive background, it's really intriguing. And, you know, it's, for me, as a resident for plus 25 years in the Caneo Valley, it, it's better savings, it's better services, and better recycling, and that's for me and my family, and, you know, I, I heard some other residents say it's for their city, and I agree with that wholeheartedly, and, you know, it, it's time for a change, you know? Things are much different nowadays than they were just a year ago, so I think it's important for us to kind of, you know, look beyond what we've been doing for so long and look for something different, look for something beneficial for the city and for the residents. So, I appreciate your time, and I thank you very much, and I, and I wholeheartedly support the Athens proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Albert Krikjian, followed by Roseanne Witt. Albert, if you could unmute yourself?
Of cour, of course.
Thank you.
Forgive me. Good evening, Council. My name is Albert Krikjian. I'm a local business owner and a resident here in Thousand Oaks. I'm speaking today in favor of the staff recommendation to choose Athens as the waste services provider for our city. Athens has a great reputation, and at the end of the day, they will save us all some money while still providing the best services. They have been very friendly and are committed to being as a part of our community, which is very important for Thousand Oaks. I know they went through a competitive process and came back with the best deal for Thousand Oaks, and will bring in new revenues to the city through, and also save the city money. I'm pleased that they have been recommended, and I ask that the City Council approve this recommendation to have Athens as our trash service provider. I thank you very much, and I'm proud of my city.
Thank you. All right. We have five speakers left, a few dropped off. Roseanne Witt is joining us via video, followed by Jennifer Hernandez via telephone, and Barbara Sponsler via telephone. Good evening.
Am I up?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members. My name is Roseanne Witt, a resident of Thousand Oaks. I applaud your efforts to secure a waste management contract that will reduce landfilled organic waste and the greenhouse gases it generates. While the proposed contract mentions compost only once, I hope the food and yard waste collected will be composted and returned to our community. If so, I suggest some of it should be offered to local farmers for use as a soil amendment to encourage regenerative farming techniques that actually build healthy living soils, which in turn, one, improve carbon sequestration, ensuring our agricultural lands are a carbon sink rather than a carbon source; two, increase water infiltration as a hedge against prolonged drought for long-term water security; and three, significantly lower costs for chemical inputs like fertilizers and pesticides while reducing farmers' health risks from exposure to these toxins. The resulting mutually beneficial relationship such a program could build between area farmers and city and county leadership could be further expanded to establish a more localized food supply and thus a more resilient, food-secure Thousand Oaks. With the start of the COVID pandemic, we all experienced firsthand just how quickly supply chains can collapse in emergency situations that disrupt major transportation and distribution systems, leaving communities like ours that are dependent on trucked-in industrial food system to ration essential food supplies, and staples in grocery store aisles go empty for weeks. To avoid future similar scenarios, Thousand Oaks could implement a compost-sharing incentive program, begin coordinating with Ventura County to promote a Buy VC campaign, and adopt policy to incentivize local farm-to-table markets, serving area cafeterias, hospitals, schools, jails, grocers, restaurants, et cetera, to guarantee our residents a steady, reliable, and resilient selection of the diverse nutritious food grown locally, while simultaneously supporting our regional family farmers. Such a program could keep local dollars circulating within our own community, help Thousand Oaks reduce carbon emissions from delivery trucks transporting food over long distances, help recharge area aquifers, strengthen our local freshwater security, and help our farmers better weather increasing climate volatility caused by global warming. It would be a win-win-win for our city, county, and local farmers. I hope you will put TO-generated compost a valuable resource to work building our community's local food, water, economic, and climate resilience. Thank you for your time, and good evening.
Thank you. Some great ideas there. Jennifer Hernandez on the phone, followed by Barbara Sponsler on the phone, and our last two speakers will join us via video. Hi, Jennifer. Jennifer? Jennifer Hernandez?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm, my name is Jennifer Hernandez, and I'm commenting to raise concerns about the proposed waste removal contract with Athens Services. I'm a resident of the city of Swamore, with family and friends who live in the city of Santa Paula, and we're troubled by the proposal to house a significant number of vehicles near downtown Santa Paula as part of this contract, as well as by the proposal to have this contract exempted from the provision- this contract exempted from the provisions of CEQA. I ask that you consider a 30-day extension to review the proposal and to allow for public education and input in the community where these vehicles will be housed. Then I also ask that you require an environmental review of the emissions impacts that this operation will have in the city of Santa Paula. A good deal for the city of Thousand Oaks shouldn't come at the expense of the health of the Santa Paula community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the phone is Barbara Sponsler. Is Barbara joining us? No? Then we will go to the next person via video, Sophia Austin, followed by Allegra Roth.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Sophia Austin. I've been a resident of Thousand Oaks for over 40 years. The city council should not take action to award the agreement tonight. The Brown Act requires the city to include in its agenda the city's proposed CEQA action prior to approving the award. In a 2013-published case entitled San Joaquin Raptor Rescue Center versus County of Merced, available at 216 Cal App, 41167, the county was found to have violated the Brown Act for failing to include consideration of a mitigated negative declaration as part of its public agenda. The council is poised to make the same unfortunate mistake here tonight if it takes action rather than vote to continue the item. Even if the council were to find the award categorically exempt from CEQA, it must identify the precise exemption and find that none of the exceptions listed in CEQA guideline section 15300.2 apply. A categorical exemption is not applicable when the cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over time is significant. Here, the ward to Athens tonight will result in new truck traffic trips and vehicle miles traveled with related direct cumulative air quality and greenhouse gas emissions that have never been considered or studied under CEQA, including potentially significant cumulative air quality, greenhouse gas, and traffic impacts. The city must take a break, continue the item, and come back once it has properly agendizized all the proposed actions related to the agreement award, and carefully consider CEQA compliance. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to Allegra Roth via video, and our last speaker will be Barbara Sponsler.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thanks for being here on a late night talking about waste hauling. My name is Allegra Roth. I'm an environmental nonprofit professional, raised in Ventura County. I'm actually calling from Santa Barbara, but I'm very passionate about municipal waste management and care about my home county, so I want to chime in and share some perspectives. I appreciate the due diligence that the city staff and council have done on this bid and the dedication to SB 1383 compliance. There are just two issues I would like to bring up and echo other speakers on. Firstly, the location of the vehicle yard proposed by Athens is important. As referenced, when the vehicle yard will result in noise and pollution of dozens of vehicles, the location does need to be considered before the contract is awarded. My understanding of the bid, Athens was going to rely on a location in Santa Paula for its vehicle yard in a building that is not zoned industrial, in a building they don't own, that is in a disadvantaged and low-income community. The vehicle yard has the potential to cause powerful environmental harm against frontline communities, and the location hasn't even been confirmed yet. So the fact that the location hasn't been decided on is concerning, and it does need to be addressed before the contract is awarded. Secondly, I firmly believe we as local communities need to invest in local infrastructure before handling our waste. Hauling organic waste hundreds of miles away, like proposed in the Athens proposal, is an antiquated approach, and it's not sustainable for our climate or for our communities. Food waste is a resource. It can be made into compost and used to sequester carbon on our farmland to help our county achieve its climate goals and to help our farmers. So with the Athens proposal, we are letting this resource go. We're shipping it out of the county. So I believe we should keep this food waste in our county, keep the benefits in our county. We have the upcoming Limoneira facility to produce this compost with local green jobs. Why wouldn't we use it? So I strongly hope the city considers this in the current and future waste hauling agreements and to be able to address these concerns. I ask that the city postpone this award for 30 days and consider these issues before deciding on the contract. Thanks so much.
Thank you. And this was our last speaker. We were having technical difficulties with Barbara Sponsler. All right, so we have heard from quite a few people this evening, and also wanted to make the public aware. We have received 141 written statements. 28 were pro the recommendation tonight by staff, and 107 are against staff recommendation. Six were neutral. And with that, I will now...
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I have two of my questions have not yet been answered through this whole process, so I wanted to see if Athens would respond to it.
Okay. We can certainly do that before we go to staff to address all of the comments. Well, not all of them, but many of them.
Sure.
All right. Go ahead. And to whom would you like to direct your question?
To Athens Services directly. One of my questions I asked previously was the question of, how is it that if we're dealing with life expenses, how is Athens able to come in at a lower bid, which I'm not objecting to, but I want to make certain that what they're proposing is secure? Is this a Walmart-type effect where they come in and underbid using the profits from other Walmart locations to drive business out and then drive the prices back up after all the competition is gone? Or is there some magic formula that they're using here? Not to ask them for trade secrets, but I would like to feel secure that their competitive bid is going to be competitive.
Okay, very good. And I think that Mr. Clifford is standing at the podium to answer your questions.
I am. Thank city council for that question. I can tell you that Athens is a family-owned company. We don't have a huge corporate office. We don't have shareholders. We're privately held, and our price is a rock-solid price where we are making a profit. And the people that know our finances are us. Caesar Torres diligently prepared the financial part along with the owners of our company. It is sustainable. I think the staff report did a good job of showing what our average rates are and for the services provided in the city of Thousand Oaks, along with the infrastructure that we're using. And you can see that the miles that we're going to drive are equal to or less than the current miles. We stand by our proposal. We're not in the business of growing this company and losing money. We're in the business of growing and sustaining, which we have done. Our finances have been vetted by the city, and this is a rock-solid proposal, so there's going to be no bargain basement price and moving up. The difference between an existing contract and this RFP process is this is an opportunity for you to do it all at once and extend that over 15 years, which is exactly what we did. So when you take that cost, that big cost of that $25 to $30 million, and you extend it over 15 years, that has a different impact than if you extended it over seven. And I think staff was insightful, and that was helpful to us. So I want to make this clear to everybody listening tonight, because it seems like our competitors have issues with our pricing. I just want to tell you this, city council. Our infrastructure can handle this where it currently is. We have proposed even a better infrastructure. I talked to Mr. Camarillo on the phone, and we really want to work with your partners. If your internal resources can match or beat the prices that we have, we're going to use them. We want to use them, and Mr. Camarillo knows that, too. So I can guarantee you that this price is good. I can guarantee you that the prices will go up by CPI only, and by the end of this 15-year contract, you're still going to be lower than you are today, and that's what a competitive force does. I mean that. The city staff talked to all of our communities. They looked at all of the research, and we're in good shape, and we're hoping that you understand that. And I mean that with all my heart. There's no reason for me to stand here tonight and make anything up. It's absolutely the truth.
Thank you. One last question, Madam Mayor. Again, this may be for staff, and I'll address it a little bit later. But addressing the CEQA issue, which again was also not answered, but perhaps that we could come with the staff's response. So I'll wait and see if they want to answer that after we go through the other questions by council members.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right. We will now go back to staff to have the, some of the concerns addressed. And to whom should I toss it? Is it going to be Ms. Cox or Mr. Finley?
I can start off with addressing some of the questions. I heard a number of questions addressing the fact that our organic waste and our food waste will be going out of the county. There was concern over that. I just want to reemphasize the fact that currently our food waste is going out of the county right now. It's not staying in the county. Our food waste is going up to Kern County to be processed at a composting facility there. There is no permitted food processing facility in the county. When there is one, when there becomes one, which I understand that Bill Camarillo has a composting facility planned for the Limoneira site. There is also, the county put out an RFP, and they had a winning company there. They haven't yet decided upon that, but the city of Oxnard is also going to issue an RFP for organics processing at the end of this month. So there will be options for processing of food waste within the county. I expect that Athens will be negotiating with those different entities that are able to open and construct a facility here in the county. They have not been able to do that yet because they need to be able to first get the contract. So once they have the contract, they will be in a position to negotiate with the entities here in town. In the meantime, our job is to locate a facility where our organics can be processed, and that's precisely what has been done with this agreement. I think that Mr. Camarillo raised some concerns about the RFP process. I believe that we answered that in our presentation tonight more than once. And we did actually allow the other entities to answer questions. We did interview them. They did have a chance to answer our questions. We provided written questions in advance, and we did clarify any points that needed clarifying in their proposal. So that was done. There was a question about the edible food recovery support that will be provided that is included in the contract. At no cost to the city, the contractor must provide support to the city's edible food recovery program under SB 1383. That includes educating commercial food generators, providing records of site visits, doing education, et cetera. So they will be partners with the city in the edible food recovery program. There was some comments, again, about rates. I believe that Athens Services has provided fair rates, and as you have seen in the comparison with the other cities that I just showed, the rate is not out of the ordinary in any way. And when there are comments made about nowhere, I think somebody had said earlier that nowhere are the rates being rolled back to provide these new services? I guess it depends where those rates start in the first place. So the rates that we saw, that we were presented with, were fair and reasonable. There was a question about the responsibility and the fines that the city could face if we didn't adhere to the requirements of SB 1383. I'm going to let our consultant, Richard Tagore Erwin, take that question if you can, please. Richard, and let us know what provisions are in the contract for protecting the city in the case of failing to meet diversion requirements.
So what we have in the contract that's been drafted up and reviewed by many attorneys is that basically if your contractor, if it's Athens as a selected contractor, if they get the city in a position of noncompliance with Cal Recycle, that they are responsible for all costs associated with indemnification, consultants, city staff, and any fines that are related to the services they're doing. Basically, if they're not doing their job and the city gets in trouble, they're on the financial hook for taking care of the problem. One more little comment, and I'll let it back to Helen. There's also a question on the local mulch and compost. The contract does require the contractor to bring back to the city locally, basically produced compost and/or mulch the city can use, and it will be delivered at a location of the city's choice, and it can either be done as a bulk items or bagged items. So that material will largely be coming back as a finished product, too.
Thank you, Richard. I think we're going to ask Ms. Nuna to address the CEQA question.
Thank you. Yes, just a couple of responses. First of all, with respect to the concern over compliance with the Brown Act, just a review of the case that was presented tonight. That case actually had to do with the failure of the city council to actually agendize consideration of a mitigated negative declaration. This is very different. This is, the city has provided information in the supplemental staff report indicating that the project is exempt from CEQA. So the case that's being relied upon is not relevant to this case, and there has been no Brown Act violation. Let's talk about CEQA, though, in and of itself. There's been a lot of questions raised about the environmental impacts on this. There's many exemptions that apply to this. There's, in addition to the supplemental staff report that we prepared for your consideration, there's also correspondence from Athens outside of legal counsel that provides additional sources for CEQA exemptions. And to be clear, there's two very clear exemptions. First of all is ongoing operations with little to no expansion of the use. And the second one is an exemption based on regulatory agencies, basically, you know, the actions that are taken by regulatory agencies. It's clear that this franchise agreement actually implements the state regulations, such as SB 1383, for waste reduction and diversion. It's really important to understand that what you are considering tonight, the city is not procuring a solid waste facility, and Athens-proposed waste facilities are all previously permitted and have undergone their own CEQA considerations as part of that permitting process. So yes, if Athens builds a local corporation yard to either park or fuel or maintain its fleet, that decision might need CEQA review, depending on the location, zoning, and COP requirements. But the proposed services are consistent with the current services. In other words, collecting garbage, organics, recyclables, delivering those materials to permitted solid waste facilities for disposal, transfer, and/or processing. This is really just a continuation of an ongoing operation, but with a different contractor. And again, this new franchise agreement is meant to be to meet state regulatory requirements. So under those circumstances, staff believes that the project or the consideration of this agreement is exempt from CEQA.
Thank you. Is there other staff that will address some of the comments made? Or was that all? Because we heard a lot tonight.
Madam Mayor, I think at this point, there are some additional questions that we would like to refer back to Athens to answer, specifically about their yard in Santa Paula, and obviously could feel additional questions from the council.
Excellent. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Bob Engler here. I believe we have a couple of questions for staff. I think Councilman Adams may have a question as well. There was some discussion today, just giving it to staff, probably to Dr. Cox. There was some discussion today as to the feasibility of the ability of Athens to meet the 1383 regulations at the price they've quoted. The contract, as I remember reading it, is 1383 compliant. Is that true?
Yes, completely. All the different aspects of the 1383 regulations, the organics collection, the monitoring, the compliance reporting, the tracking, the requirement to meet the diversion standards, the requirement to bring or provide, procure the compost back or the mulch back to the community, which is what Richard just mentioned. All of those aspects are in the contract. They're all included. And the technology that Athens is using in their trucks with the cameras that can record and monitor the locations and the contents of all the waste they pick up, that's a huge, huge piece of the part of the compliance, and it automatically goes into a GIS database. They already have it set up, can generate any kind of reports that Cal Recycle requires. So they're set up to do that right now. So they're set up to do that right now.
Very good. So we, we would expect that there, there would be no, uh, coming back to us in a year or two saying that thirteen eighty-three has been too, uh, uh, something was in there that they didn't know about. So this is fully thirteen eighty-three compliant.
Absolutely. Yes.
Mr. Adam?
Uh, yes, thank you, ma'am. Actually, uh, Mayor Portem Angler, uh, did ask one of the questions I wanted to give the applicant a, a chance to respond to, uh, because it was an objection from some of the competitors about AB thirteen eighty-three and, uh, it's already factored into the price and you're going to be able to meet it. I mean, it's a really stringent and it's a big shift in how we process. So, uh, any one of the, uh, Athens people can answer. You're completely confident that you're going to be AB thirteen eighty-three compliant?
And that would be a question to Mr. Clifford?
Thank you very much.
I was gonna ask the Athens, but yeah, Cliff can answer that. Oh, I'm Cliff.
No, no, Cliff.
Referred to Cliff Finley. Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Clifford.
Absolutely.
Got a lot of funs with names, that's for sure. Sir, I want to let you know that this, uh, this entire process is being taped. I'm being recorded and this is a public document. I'm telling you as I stand before you tonight, that regardless of what our competitors think, Athens Services stands by their bid and we are not going to increase the rates over thirteen eighty-three as to what we have presented to you tonight. And you can play this back and you can watch it. And, uh, I, I understand our competitors might look at it differently, but the one thing that I know that they don't is how Athens operates. I know how our financials look. I know how our drivers work in the street. And I know how our team will attack thirteen eighty-three. And you guys have hit a home run. I'm just hoping that we could clear the bases tonight and move on. So thank you.
All right. Well, since you're there, if I may, I just one or two others. Uh, this business, uh, like Mr. Finley brought up, uh, the trucks, you know, Sun Valley versus Santa Paula. How's that kind of work?
Sir, I'm going to bring the expert up. I definitely have an opinion, but there's somebody more qualified on trucks than I am. So here he is.
All right.
Yeah, thank you, council. So, um, the, the question's been brought up about where we're going to be housing our trucks. So, uh, multiple times, staff has referred to the fact that, you know, if we are awarded this contract, you know, we will pursue infrastructure in Ventura County. And so at, uh, Santa Paula, we currently have a one acre, uh, you know, uh, location or a one acre yard that sits in a seven acre parcel. We have the option to expand immediately in Santa Paula and we will be doing that after this contract is, is awarded. Um, you know, it, it keeps, we keep getting the infirmant that, you know, competition is really not allowed in Ventura County unless you have an infrastructure. Well, we need to start with an, an agreement. We need to start with a contract and then we can build upon that infrastructure. And we certainly have the location in, in, uh, already identified, which is Santa Paula. Uh, we did anecdotally get a, a phone call from the city of Santa Paula letting us know that somebody was inquiring about a maintenance facility that sits adjacent to our Santa Paula location, which is probably the one that was being inferred as to, uh, not owned by the same, uh, folks that own the Santa Paula facility that we come to operate.
All right. So, uh, I mean, you feel confident you'll be able to house the trucks in Santa Paula?
Yes, yes, sir, I do.
All right. I think that would be an obvious plus for, over Sun Valley and, uh, just, uh, a couple of people asked about the RNG, renewable natural gas infrastructure. You have the capability of using this resource?
We do. We currently have two agreements, one with Trillium and one with British Petroleum, uh, to actually buy renewable natural gas. And we're currently using it in the infrastructure that we have uh, at our Sun Valley facility. We actually, uh, fuel up the trucks there, uh, locally using slow fuel stations. We have the capacity to fuel about a hundred and twenty trucks or so in that facility. Uh, and so, yeah, we are currently using renewable natural gas and we, you, we, we plan to do the same thing as we build the infrastructure in Ventura County as well.
Okay. I just, real quick, uh, if you're awarded the contract, can you tell us just a little bit about the transition process that you'll provide for the residents?
Yeah, of course. So we have, you know, we will deploy forty-five recycle coordinators six months before the contract implementation to make sure that we hit every single one of the commercial customers. Our intent there is to make sure that we're rightsizing the clients and that we are, you know, adjusting their service levels so that they fit into the right waste stream or that they actually have the right amount of, uh, the, the bins and the right pricing to be able to pick up the, the clients. So that, that's part of the, that's part of the rollout. You know, the initial rollout is having that conversation, obviously from a residential standpoint. Uh, we're also going to be executing on mailers and proactive phone calls to make sure that we have the proper service level for the residential customers as well.
Yeah, okay. I mean, obviously a smooth transition would be vital. You know what they say, first impressions are lasting. So, uh, you feel confident that, uh, you can execute a smooth transition if awarded the contract?
Sure we do. We, we, I've got plenty of, of experience with, uh, transitions and, uh, we are known for the flawless execution that we're able to provide.
All right. Thank you.
Adam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Are you ready for me?
Uh, yes, I just see that, uh, Mr. Angler still has his hand up. Did you have additional questions?
Yes, Paddy, I do, but, um, Councilmember Jones has been, uh, quietly sitting by while we talk. So let, uh, let Councilman, uh,
And he has. And so go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Are you implying I've been unusually quiet tonight? Uh, Al, my mother used to say you have only one opportunity to make a first impression. And I think that's probably a correct statement. You know, I have this list of things that the, uh, ones who were detractors of your, uh, bid and your, and the process and so forth. Uh, and I'm speaking to the, uh, folks, uh, from, uh, the Athens company. As far as, I'll, I'll just tick these off quickly, uh, because I think most of them have been answered. But it relative to the rates, one of the letters, I think it was from, um, Waste Management pointed out in some of your cities, you have higher rates. And they were implying, or maybe even more than implying that this is sort of a lost leader perhaps that you're proposing to, uh, Thousand Oaks. And you just can't wait to, uh, you know, quickly, uh, say that they, you need higher rates. And now I know you've heard that the contract, uh, would make it very hard or maybe impossible, but they point out places, I don't have the whole list, Temple City, I think Redondo Beach, South Pasadena. Are, are, is this apples to apples or is this apples to oranges or what?
Councilmember, this is Gary Clifford. Uh, I appreciate Waste Management's interest in our company, uh, but they're very much unfounded and absolutely misleading to you. So I'll give you just a couple of examples. First off, our rate is great and you're going to enjoy it. And our rate is appropriate for the services that you're asking and for SB thirteen eighty-three. Uh, to say that the services that you have are like South Pasadena, um, is actually disingenuous and it's misleading to you. And I'm sorry that happened. South Pasadena is a city that has a valet backyard service. And we physically go into their backyards, pick up their trash cans, carry them out to their front yard, dump it in a small truck that we call a, uh, a scout, a, a, a borough truck, a BYS truck. That little truck has a split bin. It drives to another location, dumps half of its load in one mother truck and half of a load in another mother truck. And then they drive to our processing center. That is quite a different service. It's very much worth the forty dollars. It's probably worth fifty dollars, but we're so competitive that they have a great rate. Uh, some of the other cities that were in front of you are mixed waste processing cities, which is a totally different kind of service than you have that is source separated. Um, I think that I wrote a very, very, uh, pointed letter to you and your staff that explained all that and actually showed the cities that are comparative to the, uh, services that you have. And our prices are lower in those cities than the ones that we offered you. So, sir, I would like to tell you, first off, thank you for bringing that up. Secondarily, um, Athens is, uh, doing the right thing for your community. And the reason that we can do that is because you're allowing a competitive force. Had you not done that, they would be paying either thirty-four, thirty-six dollars or thirty-three dollars, depending on what you're doing. I appreciate the fact that you vetted this out, but your staff took us to the task. It was not an easy process. But I'm proud of Athens and I'm proud of what they've done.
So the answer to my question is no, Ben. It's not a lost leader.
It, it is not a lost leader. We're going to make money on this account, sir.
Okay. Uh, the RFP process, I think the, uh, other people have pointed out that we didn't take enough time. I can't buy that. What did we, final renewal, what, uh, when we went out for, for the, you know, last and best bid was what, six, eight months ago or something? I think that's probably enough time. So I don't believe we need to continue it another thirty days. Your comp- company, uh, seems to have very good credentials. I, I, I believe you've shown that, uh, you're not going to have trouble, uh, sustaining yourself in this, uh, contract. Somebody said that you might be liable for fines. Did you, did you catch that? And do you have any idea what they meant about fines?
I did, sir. And I think they're speaking to our compliance to thirteen eighty-three. Our company's been around for sixty-five years. All of our communities are compliant. We're responsible for any fines due to actions. I think your consultant explained that. And so again, that was just another misleading statement to make you afraid to try to make a change for the bet, for the better. I think people, uh, mostly trash haulers were trying to, to make you guys a little bit nervous about making a change. And I just want you to know that change is my business and I look forward to making you guys feel great about making a change.
Okay, finally, I'll, I'll, uh, just echo what was said earlier about your new yard that you're proposing. So do I take it you're, uh, planning to leave the, a yard for these particular trucks? If you get the contract for Thousand Oaks and, uh, leave, uh, to the Sun Valley site and go to, uh, Santa Paula? Is that correct?
We currently have a site in Santa Paula that's one acres. It's, it's expandable up to seven acres with a conditional use permit already in place. And we're in negotiations with the owners. And if you visited any of our truck yards, you'd be very proud of them. Your staff has. They are second to none in the industry and, uh, you'd be proud of that yard if it was in your city. And if we have an opportunity to do that someday, we will.
Yeah, well, they implied that you might, uh, be, uh, somehow harm the neighbors with noise or, or smog or something. Do you have nearby neighbors to that yard that might be impacted?
That's real area right next to the freeway and we, we get right on the on-ramp and, and go right into your community.
Okay. Well, and finally, I'm, I'm also on the board of, of the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. And I asked our city attorney if I have a conflict of interest here. Because we, uh, we wouldn't mind having you considering, uh, using toll and landfill rather than Calabasas. If, uh, stop me, Adam Attorney, if I'm getting in dangerous grounds here, but, uh,
I'm looking at the city attorney.
You're, you're fine, Councilmember Jones. Again, it's just a matter of disqualification for consideration. It's been some future decision.
So if they haul me away to Booby Hatch or somewhere, you'll come with me?
I'll come with you. I'll come with you.
Uh, the, uh, is there any chance, sir, of, and this is not a quid pro quo, but is there any chance that you might consider using toll and landfill?
Thank you, Councilmember. I will answer that question just like I did, Mr. Camarillo. Uh, we will have the opportunity to bring a lot of tonnage, whether it's trash, recycling, organics, to someone who wants to negotiate with us. Uh, if that would be toll and road, we would be thrilled with that. We are, we have a definite plan, uh, that is less money than your current infrastructure by a big, by a big amount. And as we develop our infrastructure, we will be talking to Toll and Road, to Mr. Camarillo. Uh, we'll, we're even going to talk to Waste Management about Seamy Valley once we have the authority to do that. And we hope to even enhance it more. Our goal is to make sure that net-net, there's more opportunity in Ventura County than not. So the answer to your question is there's an absolute chance that Toll and Road could be the beneficiary of more trash.
Good. Well, I'm glad to hear it. Uh, I hope it works out.
I do.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. We go back to Mayor Portem, Bob Angler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Clifford, thanks for, um, taking all our questions. Appreciate it. Um, I've got a, a couple of specific questions. Uh, uh, citizens have reached out to me with some specific questions. But before I get to that, I wanted to get that back to this idea that, uh, as one of the, um, one of your competitors said, your bid is too good to be true. And, uh, and I know you've covered this ground already, but can you give me an idea? Um, going forward from here, uh, what types of things would cause you to come to the city and ask for a rate increase? Um, one of, one of your, uh, competitors let me know that there's been several in Temple City, Norwalk, um, West Covina, West Hollywood over the last few years, where you've come to those cities for increases in, in the rate. Can you give me some examples of those types of things that would, uh, incentivize you to come to us for a rate increase?
I will, sir, and thank you. I, I, I remember a story when you said too good to be true. I met my wife about thirty-six years ago and I thought she was too good to be true. And that relationship has lasted thirty-seven years. And this will also.
We'll have, we'll have to take the reference from your wife then, okay?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I can tell you that, um, every waste hauler, Waste Management included, who is inquiring about this, has raised their rates. Uh, in Manhattan Beach, I was, uh, at the same RFP that Mr. Corcoran was at, and they raised their rate fifty percent in Manhattan Beach. Uh, I'm just telling you that in some communities, based on the structure of their current contract, they call us in and they want to restructure the contract. Part of that restructuring is getting more years on the contract, including things like thirteen eighty-three and other unfunded state mandates that your staff and the consultant can talk to you about. So in a community where we have a longer term contract and we have to renegotiate those things, the answer is absolutely. They call us in. We do something that's mutually beneficial. And all of those are within the same scope and percentage for all the waste haulers, not just Athens. We have done nothing different than any of the other waste haulers. And the fact of the matter is, one of our owners has a slogan that I really like. And he says, "Gary, we'd rather make a slow nickel than a quick dime." And most of our increases have been a percentage less than the industry has done in exchange for longer term contracts. Because our cities understand that longer term investment like you did is better for us. So the answer to you, sir, is that we all do it. Uh, the only person that's complaining about it is one of our competitors. And I think you should take note of that.
Thank, thank you and I, I appreciate that. Um, let me give you a specific question that one of our citizens, uh, came to me with that frankly I hadn't thought about. Uh, part of what you're offering the city is curbside hazardous waste pickup. And this, this citizen was concerned that that's a bad idea to have hazardous waste on the, on the curb in front of houses where kids are walking by and that sort of thing. How do, give me an idea of how you, uh, look at that and, um, make sure that it's a safe operation?
That's an excellent observation and it's not really curbside, but we come to the curb. So what happens is the customer will call up, and I think it's four times a year as I recollect. If you have four, uh, gallons of paint that you're not using anymore, you will take that paint, you will put it in a safe location on your front porch or back from the street somewhere where it's not unsightly. Then our crew will come by, stop at your home, come to your front door, or whatever arrangement you made over the phone, retrieve that, package it in a special way, and then send it to be manifested and taken to a hazardous waste location. At no time in this process is any hazardous waste, household hazardous waste left at the curb side in the street.
So it's, remains under the homeowner's, uh, uh, possession really until you show up with it?
That's affirmative, sir.
Okay, then. Uh, another, another complaint, uh, had to do with your billing practices and the charging of, uh, uh, interest on unpaid bills. Is that something that, uh, you do as a business practice? And, uh, how rigid are you on that?
No, sir. In fact, during the COVID period, you would be surprised at the amount of money we're carrying on receivables and forgiving and doing other things. We do not charge that and that's a absolutely false allegation.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that. And, and, um, okay, coming from a nonprofit background that I, that I am, many of the nonprofits in town have been enjoying a privilege with, um, Waste Management, who have been giving, um, portable and disposable trash cans for different, different events. Uh, we have a street fair, uh, and, and different events in town for nonprofits. Um, is that something you also would continue doing or? Is that something you also would continue doing? Or or how would you approach it?
Mr. Mayor Portem, you have not seen the likes of our philanthropy in your communities, and we have some of the coolest temporary cardboard boxes you're ever going to see. We supply those to our nonprofits. And with liners for free, we even offer a service to pick them up and replenish them. I do it every day in every community we serve, and it just takes a phone call to get them. Or or act actually in your community now, which is very cool. Matt Trout, who's on this call, is going to stock them in the Sustainability Center, and the nonprofit would just have to go right in there and interact and get them, and we and we give those for free to our customers.
Okay, thank you. That's that's all my questions. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do any of my colleagues have any additional questions before I ask questions? Okay, then. But the question I have for Mr. Clifford, please stay at the podium there, is you mentioned that you have trucks in Sun Valley, which are fueled with the RNG in Sun Valley. You are considering moving trucks that you will be using in Thousand Oaks to Santa Paula. However, does your property in Santa Paula have refueling stations that are RNG?
It doesn't have them in place right now, and we're in negotiations to put them in place. We also have facilities that we can fuel our trucks near that location with RNG.
If you were to install the RNG in Santa Paula, does that require, I would imagine it requires environmental review, maybe some sort of approval process through the city. Do you have any information about that?
I know that we would go to the city's planning department like we would in any other community. And typically, that is that is exempt from CEQA with a mitigated negative declaration. And typically, you would not have to do that, but that is something that would happen, you know, under the guise of the city that we were in and their planning and redevelopment laws and ordinances and regulations.
Do you have a plan B for that?
We do. We have. We have. Our proposal is flexible. I could bring Caesar up if you'd like, but we have a few different ideas as we move forward with this. Our idea in Santa Paula is solid. We also have our our Sun Valley Yard if we need to use that. And we have have other options. We've we've talked to the city a couple of times about key pieces of property in Thousand Oaks and in the surrounding areas. In fact, we had a piece of property in Seamy Valley that was in Escrow for a while. So we're diligently diligently looking at that, but our plan is solid to start this. And as we get started and move towards migrating more work towards Ventura County, there'll be bigger and better things to come.
Thank you. The reason I'm asking this is because Santa Paula already contacted some council members, well, me, and I'm not sure if other council members heard from them as well, with concerns about the environmental impact of those trucks in Santa Paula. And I want to make sure then that if if there should be a problem with that, that there are other options for you.
There are, Madam Mayor, and I promise you that when you guys did a background check on us, that we are good neighbors to all of our communities, even the ones where we have our material recovery facilities. And we will make you proud, no matter where our yard is, and we will meet with all neighbors, town hall meetings, whatever we need to do to mitigate any concerns.
And then lastly, I know we've been at this ad nauseam, but I need to ask it. A comment was made that this proposal or the rates are not tethered to reality. And so I you've already stated it numerous times, but I want to hear you say that this is indeed something that is realistic.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Again, it's a good closing statement. Make sure your recorders are turned on, because I want you to hold the V two this. I would tell you this, that your current rates and the rates that were proposed proposed to you and your MOU are not tethered to reality. I look at the other side of the coin, and I don't know how else to say that. I was I've been sitting in your city council chambers when before COVID and watched this decision and and really paid attention to what you were saying. And I was appalled in the industry in general about the lack of competitiveness. And, you know, when you guys started talking about going to bid, I just saw a breath of fresh air. And I I took that opportunity, and our owners watched it on TV also. We just took the opportunity to throw our hat in the ring because we were already in Santa Paula, and I think it turned out well. But I want to be very clear with you. I think that rates in the mid thirties, going up to forty dollars per home, are way out of line. And I think our rate is right where it needs to be. We're going to make money. You're not going to be disappointed with us. Your your nonprofits and schools and community are going to benefit from our presence. We have a great team, and I'm going to say this for the last time. I'm very proud of the Eric Killian family and Athens Services and our employees for helping us come up with this great bid. And I'm going to round it up to, well, I'll round it down to twenty-four bucks. That's a great rate. It's going to sustain our company. And you're going to be proud of the decision if you make that tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. I think we have heard now from everyone and had all of our questions answered. Do my colleagues have any additional questions for staff, perhaps? I'm looking.
Madam Mayor, I think Dr. Cox had one more point.
Okay.
Just to make.
Where is she? I don't see her.
Sorry. I was just going to say that, you know, council has approved rate increases in the in the past and with our current contracts that are based on extraordinary, what's called extraordinary rate increases. In fact, since two thousand seventeen, between two thousand seventeen and two thousand twenty, council approved two extraordinary rate increases amounting to a nineteen percent rate increase over three years. And those were on the basis of recycling costs, the 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 increased processing costs at the facilities, and also on the basis of increased green waste tipping fees and processing costs associated with them. So my point is that the new contract have only allows for rate increases when there are ship material changes in laws. It doesn't allow for them in tipping fees, so it's more stringent than what our current contract is. So they would only be processed if there were changes in law that required that. And this is common. Most cities, most contracts will allow for, you know, justifiable increases in rates when they're based on circumstantial changes. So if the state was to come down with a new mandate that required new services, et cetera, the contract does allow for that, but they would have to be, as I said, material changes in law.
Thank you. All right. I believe that we had all of our questions answered, so we can open it up for a council discussion and or a motion. Mr. Adam, you unmuted yourself already. So did Mr. Engler.
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
And Mr. McNamie, too.
And I did also.
Okay, all right. Go at it.
All right. Anyway, first of all, I want to thank all the applicants. This has not been an easy process and took a lot of time and effort on on your part. And I want to thank Waste Management and Harrison for the years that they have of service that they have given our city. They've done a good job. I have to tell you, I am proud to be on a council that for the first time ever chose to go out into the open market with a request for proposal and test that market and see what we could come up with for our residents as far as service and rates and value. With the assistance of staff and the consultant, we did just that. And I think this package that Athens has put together is pretty compelling. Thirty-four percent rate decrease for our residents with a lot of new services that we're not getting now. Hazardous waste pickup at your home rather than going out to the municipal service center, bulky items pickup days, landfill free days. You know, the list goes on and on, and I I want to thank Athens for tailoring some of the benefits to our city that they have done in this proposal. I think the the process was fair. I think it gave everybody enough time to put their best foot forward. And I think we had a very competitive process, and the 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 open market wins again, I guess you could say, because it does look like to me that the best benefit here is is Athens. And I I will say this as well. It's be and listening to Athens tonight, I don't think they've ruled out any possibility of partnerships with some of the existing haulers, whether it's Harrison at their recycling plant in Ventura or the new facility that Agarman wants to build in Santa Paula, or maybe the Seamy Valley landfill and Waste Management. I mean, it's it's a business decision. The prices would have to be right, but there's a potential there, and I think Athens is open for that. But I I have to say that they have convinced me that this would be the best way to go for our residents. And with that, I will make a motion that we do accept staff's recommendation to go with a contract with Athens.
And Mr. Adam, you need to include the amendment in our supplemental packet, which is to find the award of the exclusive solid solid waste franchise to be categorically exempt from CEQA.
That's included. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor Portem Engler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First off, I want to thank the staff. The staff had an outstanding effort over the past, I think it's been fifteen months, twelve, fourteen months or so, that this process has been underway. We we gave the go-ahead for for this to happen a good year ago. So it's been a hard, it's been a good, good effort on their part, and I appreciate the effort put in by our by our contractors as well. I the the staff did take a few slings and arrows. People were sometimes saying that they did not do an adequate job or did not do an adequate vetting. I know that our staff does a good job. And rest assured, the citizens can rest assured that they did do due diligence, and I appreciate that, that that they they've they've rose to the task again. With that said, I think coming into this this process, I think Athens had a real hill to climb. In this town, both Harrison and and Waste Management have a sterling reputation. I think we're at ninety-five percent approval rate in our surveys. People like the service that they've been given, and they've been a big part of our community for a number of years. And that that hill is a very steep hill. That said, when the when the when the information came out and the rate was substantially lower, it behooved us to really take a close look at it in terms of is it is it a doable rate? I did. For those who don't remember, I was a firefighter in the city of Redondo. So I did call my friends in Redondo Beach, both citizens there and the city staff. The citizens were very happy with the service. The city staff said there had been no problems with Athens, that they were very responsive, and a phone call away anytime they needed them. I I called. I have a friend who is a property owner in Whittier, another area serviced by Athens. This this particular individual has his personal home. He has commercial properties. He has rental properties for residential. He had nothing but good things to say about Athens. So I I did do a little bit of backgrounding on Athens myself, just to follow up to see if if these were were types of things that we could trust coming from our from our staff and from the applicant. Then again, there's the cost. The cost is substantially less. And it behooves us as a city council to look for ways to deliver a service to our citizens at a less cost. They have delivered on this. Nine, ten dollars or so a month per 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 household, per residential household is not anything to discard lightly. Another big thing for me, I was involved with as a as a labor leader when I was working, working, that they're going to take care of any employee who wants to come to their business and work. The the employees have that option. They will receive compensation and go there, and it seems that the compensation that is available at 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 the Athens is adequate. One big thing for me is they're going with the RNG. This is a way we can take one more step toward being a good steward of our environment. All total, I think they have they've made the case that we should change to another location or another vendor. I I was asked by several emails today to postpone this. In my own mind, I thought if if they answered my questions to my satisfaction, I see no reason to postpone, and I would concur with my colleague.
Thank you, Mayor Portem Engler. And next, Mr. Jones.
Yes, I would just like to agree with Mr. Adam and Mr. Engler. I got a strange phone call this afternoon. I listened to it on the answering machine, and this gentleman was up in arms that we might consider going with Athens. He didn't want his tax money to go into LA County. No tax money is going anywhere. But if we approve this, which it looks like we will, we're just going to be saving the rate payers a lot of money. We're going to be saving them about a third of what they're paying now. And I don't want to add insult to injury by telling Waste Management and Harrison that they didn't do a very good job of of satisfying this RFP, but they didn't do a very good job. I mean, I've known these companies, particularly Harrison, and I think they were a little bit asleep at the switch. If if Athens can do this coming in from another county at two thirds of what we're paying right now, just think about that. If if, say, Harrison or Waste Management were at two thirds right now of what Athens is proposing, that means that their rates have been fifty percent higher than they should have been. In other words, if you add one third to a third, to two thirds, you get what they're charging now. So I think they were, I think they would have to, if they searched their so, well, I don't I don't want to belabor this, but I believe they were high of what, you know, higher than they should have been. And and I would like to have seen them do better with their proposal because I I I knew the founder of Harrison very well. Almo Harrison, he was a very good friend of mine, and I'm sorry because I I keep reminding you, probably sick of my saying this, but I was here when we decided to go out for rates, and Harrison was one of the three original companies, and they're a fine outfit. And I really admire the whole Harrison family, so I'm I'm sorry, and I'll conclude by saying that I intend to support the motion. Thank you.
Mr. McNamie.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. I find it hard to believe that in our city that has been around for as many years as we've had, that this is the first time it's going out to competitive bid. And I'm delighted that it did because it's the open market that will determine the price for the greatest service for or product, resulting in what we're now seeing is a tremendous savings for our rate payers here for trash hauling pickup. That's going to keep approximately five million dollars annually in our city to stimulate the economy. And that winds up to be approximately forty dollars per person, man, woman, and child in the city. So that's going to boost our economy. Highly recommend that we look at that as a strong factor on selection here. They have a good reputation, Athens does, regarding the service they've done in other cities have been accommodating. No complaints that were significant, and that tells me that they're a quality company coming in who can deliver on their promises. Waste Management and Harris Harrison have done a wonderful job for this city and has done a terrific service to us for many, many years, and thank them very much for that. But I look at, again, lower rates. They're going to offer jobs to the current waste hauler employees to come over to Athens, which I think is wonderful, so that way it keeps them employed and keeps the money in Thousand Oaks. I enjoy the concept of it's privately owned as compared to shareholder owned, because every time we would pay our rates for waste hauling, those monies would be leaving our community, going to shareholders around the world, whereas now their rate reduction is going to be benefiting the people of that. Whereas now, their rate reduction is gonna be benefiting the people of Thousand Oaks. And I'm just delighted that this is an opportunity for us to make a difference. I wish it wasn't 15 years. I wish it would have been a five- or seven-year contract. They went with a straight-line depreciation for 15 years as compared to an accelerated depreciation rate, which could have come in at five to seven years, depending on which accounting method they wanted to use that would have met at the same end. Because I think 15 years is too long for an agreement such as this, because you miss the competitiveness, chases away other competitors. However, that's what was negotiated. I wasn't part of the council at the time that this went out. As a request for proposal, I would have negotiated for a shorter term. However, that is what it is. And I look forward to the vote when it comes down here in a few moments. Back to you, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that my four colleagues have summed it up quite well. This is a first in the city of Thousand Oaks. It was time, high time, that we actually conducted an RFP in order to get the most valuable service. I believe that Athens has proven that they mean business. They're serious about setting roots here in the city of Thousand Oaks. I, of course, am saddened that longtime providers, Harrison, locally owned and operated, was not competitive enough. But that is the open market, basically. And I would like to just sum this up by saying thank you to the Harrison family. Thank you to Waste Management. And I would like to call for a vote.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
Yeah, I would like to, if I may compliment you, because I remember that first meeting we had on this about a year and a half ago. And I think you were the strongest person to speak in favor of going out for competitive bids. So I'd like to recognize you for doing that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jones. I appreciate that. Madam Clerk, could you please get ready for the vote?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Pinha?
And my answer is yes. And I want to say congratulations to Athens Services. And thank you so much. We are filled with gratitude to Harrison and Waste Management. Thank you.
And Madam Mayor, that motion does pass 5-0.
And it is a unanimous vote on a very, very important contract for the city of Thousand Oaks and its ratepayers. Thank you. And with that, I will go to our city manager, Drew Powers, for any follow-up items.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment before announcing the next council meeting. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the commitment and dedication of staff, most notably Dr. Cox and her team, that poured themselves into this effort over the last year in consultation with our consultant team and under Cliff and Nodder's leadership. Also had tremendous effort from our finance department, our city attorney's office, and city manager's office staff. So I'm very appreciative of all the efforts that it took to move this forward. I think, as you've seen tonight, it was a heavy lift. With that, we do have a city council meeting again next week. And we have several special presentations. Perhaps most notably, we'll have our next community commitment award and presentation introduction from our new district attorney, Eric Nazarenko. Following that, we have two study sessions. One on the environmental justice and social equity component of our general plan and one on user fees as relating to our budget process. We also have one department report that is slated, and that's on the Rantichurow Community Equestrian Center. And that will be what will be on our meeting next week on the 16th of March. Following that meeting, just so everyone's aware, the 30th of this month will be our annual goal-setting session. And I will announce that again next week, but just wanted to let everyone know.
Thank you. Mr. Engler, did you have something to say? Because I see that your hand is up.
Just that I forgot to put my hand down. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. All right. And Mr. Powers, you're absolutely right. Staff did a tremendous job with this RFP process from the very beginning. And staff is to be commended for the hard work, because this is something that really we hadn't done before. I think staff did excellent work with being extremely thorough and providing us and presenting us a solid recommendation. So thank you to Public Works, Helen Cox, and everybody else involved. And we will adjourn tonight in memory of Richard Rosieczka. Richard Rosieczka passed away on February 12, shortly after his 92nd birthday. Dick and wife Jessie Ann had moved to Conejo Valley in 1964 to open Conejo Savings and Loan. Dick became very involved in the community and was instrumental in the development of Thousand Oaks, playing an active role as a planning commissioner from 1969 to 1971. Dick was also active with the Conejo Valley Chamber of Commerce as its chairman in 1968 and gala award winner in 1969. He was a member of the Rotary Club, volunteered with Conejo Valley Days as its steering committee chairman in 1967. Dick was an enthusiastic handball player, which encouraged him to lead the push to build sports facilities next to Thousand Oaks High School. He and Jessie Ann, his wife of 64 years, enjoyed many traveling adventures, especially on their sailboat and across the country in their RV. More recently, Dick enjoyed classes and events at the Global Adult Center. He was a charismatic and fun-loving individual and enjoying a good laugh and making people smile. Dick is survived by his children and granddaughters. We mourn his passing and extend our sincere condolences to his family and his many, many friends.
Madam Mayor, may I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Dick and I used to play handball together. And he sponsored me into Thousand Oaks Rotary in 1971. And he was really a wonderful guy and was a wonderful family. And I'm gonna miss him a lot.
Thank you. Dick will indeed be greatly missed. And with that, our meeting tonight is adjourned until March 16. Good night.
Good night.